Marlene, are we on?
Good evening, Mr. Dodge.
Good evening, Mr. Dodge. Yes, we are.
We can hear you.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dodge.
I can hear somebody typing away.
It's not me, Madam Commissioner, I promise.
Hi, City Attorney. How are you?
Hi, Commissioner. Nice to hear your voice. Good evening.
Good evening to you.
Thank you for your email this morning. I guess we'll get to the bottom of that later.
I would assume so, yes.
Yeah, yeah. I didn't know. I guess we'll find out what the answer is.
I guess we will. Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Commissioner. Commissioner Good, good evening. You're muted a bit, but we can see you.
Mic check. Good evening.
Commissioner, good. Big and big, Commissioner.
Thank you, Sam.
Mr. Vice Mayor, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney.
Your stock photo looks excellent.
Hello, everybody. Good evening. We want to start our commission meeting. Would you call a roll, please? City Clerk.
Commissioner Castillo?
Here.
Commissioner Good?
Here.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Here.
Commissioner Saipul?
I'm here.
Mayor Ordus?
Here.
City Manager Dodge?
Here.
City Attorney Goran? City Attorney Goran?
I am here.
We have a quorum. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Before I recognize the City Attorney for the mechanics of what our meeting is about, let me just say that our hearts and prayers are out to the residents of Westview condominium for that terrible fire that occurred. So whatever the city can do to help you, we're here. Our condolences for that terrible thing that happened there. Okay, City Attorney, go ahead.
Before the City Attorney, Mayor, I'd like to recognize we also have-
Okay, I'll get to you. Let the City Attorney first.
Go ahead, City Attorney. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Commission. As you know, this evening's proceedings are on a virtual platform. You are operating this evening under what is referred to as the city's emergency ordinance number 1952, which is adopted in November of 2020, which follows the execution by the governor of Florida of 20-52, which is the statewide emergency on which, in great part, the city's emergency ordinance is based, given the nature of the international pandemic and the COVID-19 implications, not just for the country, but also for our state and for our county and for the city. The consequence of which is, is that there are some members currently on the dais. Commissioner Good is on the dais this evening. Mayor, you're on the dais this evening, but there are some commissioners who are not, who are actually in different locations, and legally they're able to do so under the provisions of that particular code section that was adopted by the commission as an emergency measure to protect the public and the public health as well. There are several rules of the road that I think are worthy of noting for the public record and for those members of the public who have either dialed in, emailed, or have called in or about to call in. For the record, there was a notice provided to any affected party in any of the proceedings this evening, whether it be a quasi judicial ordinance or anything of that sort or type, and they've been given certain information, but let me reflect for the record what those things are. The public can participate. There's no bar to participation by the public via the following options. If members are listening in or dialed in or actually logged on, they may use the following phone number. It's 1-408-418-9388. That's 1-408-418-9388. And for the purposes of the WebEx, that's the virtual platform that the city has been using, as have many cities in the state of Florida. The access code, if you need to have that handy, is 1-79-921-3643. Submitting a comment via email, which will also be read into the record, is also permitted in the context of public access, or those members of the public who have what's called pre-registered, and there have been some folks that have given a pre-registration before tonight's meeting to access the meeting through the WebEx platform. At the time of any public input, which would be called for by the mayor, who still controls the meeting as a matter of the virtual platform, comments submitted via email will be read into the record. Jonathan Bonilla, who is assisting the city commission and the city administration this evening, is in the room and is able to coordinate the incoming calls and emails and such, the second part of which is the public who have pre-registered, and there are several that have, and have accessed the meeting via the WebEx platform, you'll be identified. You push star to raise your hand. There's actually a little hand that goes up on the virtual platform. Mr. Bonilla will recognize you. You'll be told to unmute your phone, and you'll be able to comment on and off, and that may be before the commission at that particular moment. The person who makes this request will be asked to identify themselves by stating their first name, their last name, and their address, which is not legally required if you're in the room, but because we're in this very virtual world, and the city commission wants to have the access to you that they don't have otherwise, they may not be able to see you. They may only be able to hear you. We would ask that you give your name and address. Members of the public who did not register, and they're not being precluded in any way, shape, or form from being heard this evening, but who have called in, they will be identified by the area code and the first three numbers of the telephone number. So, for example, a 954 area code, and they'll have a 849 or a 721, whatever the number is, and at the time, the call-in user will be unmuted by Mr. Bonilla and then asked to identify themselves by, again, stating their first name, their last name, and their address. Under any circumstance, and prevailing over all circumstances, the mayor and commission in the city of Pembroke Pines and the city administration are strict adherents to the public access rights of members of the public to speak at a public meeting, even though we're in the middle of a terrible international pandemic, and even though we have a state of emergency declared by our governor, that does not mean that the public cannot access this meeting. As you all know, City Hall is closed to the public. Commissioner Good and Mayor Ordus are in the chambers, but the doors are essentially unable for access by the public. But in the context of comments, they're limited by the city code to three minutes. So, again, the access code is 1-79-921-3643, and last, the dial-in number for those who would choose to access is 1-408-418-9388, and the city commission will continue its rich history and commitment to public access, public participation, and the involvement of the citizens and residents of Pembroke Pines in this commission meeting. Mayor, thank you very much, and Mayor and Commission for the time and attention. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goran. Vice Mayor, did you want to say something?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief Picorillo, I wanted to personally thank you and the fire department for their efforts in Westview. It was historic. I mean, Mayor, you've been here. I think Commissioner Good, you've been here. Definitely Commissioner Saipul's been here over 30 years. I don't recall a structural fire of this magnitude in the residential area. I just want to thank the men and women who did their part to preserve, you know, as much property and especially lives as possible. Our victims' advocates, that division was overly stressed with the displacement of six families. However, we also lost a very young girl at the age of one and a half, just on the north side of Taft Street, with an unfortunate tragedy. Mayor, my thoughts and prayers are with those families. And finally, I wanted to extend my appreciation and thanks to Jared Moskowitz, who announced his resignation as the director up in Tallahassee. Jared had put his full-throat effort in order to ensure that Pembroke Pines was never forgotten, and I want to, although he's leaving not until April, I do want to publicly recognize him for his efforts of making our community better. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Saipul?
Yes, Mayor.
You wanted to say something?
I do, Mayor. Thank you for recognizing me and remembering. I have actually a couple of good things that I really wanted to share with everybody. We have, you know, we always talk about how very, very proud we are of our students and at all different levels, what they accomplish, and, you know, we take pride in calling them, you know, ours, and so I would like to first, I believe that he was trying to get on the line. I'm not sure. Benson, are you on? Are you hearing us? Okay, he was going to try to get on, so I just wanted to bring this up to all of us and share this. In the sunset, a Pembroke Pine student appointed to the White House Health Task Force, our very own Benson Taranzo, a high school senior from Pembroke Pines, will join a select group of people aiming to ensure that the nation's pandemic response is fair to all groups, especially those hit hardest by COVID-19. The White House chose Benson Taranzo, a senior at Pembroke Pine Charter High School, for the Health Equity Task Force because of his experience with the inner workings of municipality functions, according to a news release. You all will recall that a couple of years ago, Benson came to us, and we went, he and I went to Mr. Dodge and revamped up our internship here in the city of Pembroke Pines, and Benson spent a good amount of time working with Mr. Dodge and with all of the department heads, learning about how cities function. And so he has taken that and his love for his community and his love for making things right, and as you can read from, I'm not going to read this whole story here that was written about him, but you can see from all of this that Benson Taranzo truly is an outstanding young man, and everything that he does represents the city of Pembroke Pines in just the best fashion, Mayor, and so we should be so very proud of him and look to see what his future will bring for us here in the city, because I think he's going to be one of our big leaders in not too very long of a time, doing all the right things for community and for people. So, Benson, are you on the line?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Oh, great. Yes, if you could just very quickly, you know, a few seconds, say a little something, that would be great.
Well, thank you, first of all, Commissioner Saipul, and thank you to the city for the opportunities that you have all given me, especially City Manager Dodge. I'm having some technical issues logging in today, but I just wanted to give my thanks, my sincere gratitude to the city, and, you know, I don't believe I would have gotten here today without them. So, thank you very much to all of you, and I can tell you for a fact that when I'm sitting in those meetings discussing the issues that our nation is facing in the COVID-19 pandemic, I will be thinking about the city and their citizens. So, thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, and good luck.
Thank you. Mayor, isn't that fabulous?
Thank you, Mayor.
Fabulous. Mayor, I have one other, if I could, please, quickly. Again, you know, we, thank you, Mayor. Again, you know, we talk about the wonderful things that our students do and how hard they work, how dedicated they and their families are, you know, looking for a brighter, better future and bringing things back to our city. I just wanted to let you all know that I received a message from a very, very proud, very proud parent that I, all of us, not most of us, all of us know, and he was calling about his daughter Savannah Bergeron, who is a Pembroke Pines girl from start to finish. She was actually born at Memorial West Hospital and has lived her entire life in Pembroke Pines as a Pembroke Pines resident. And what I wanted to let you know was that this very, very proud daddy and family to share with us that Savannah has been admitted to the following schools, and I will list them for you. The university of the following law schools: the University of Miami, the University of Florida, Vanderbilt University, Duke University, Georgetown, Cornell, the University of Chicago, and Harvard Law School. There are two schools that are still considering Savannah, and they would be schools, little schools you might have heard of as well, Yale and the University of Pennsylvania. So, and Savannah will let us know once she has made her final decision on where she's going to go, and we can then bring that back, Mayor, and share with you, but I just wanted to give a big shout out to her and her dedication. I know her family and I have talked about her choices of schooling for a while, and she was going to do some medical stuff, some medical bioengineering, and then she decided that law may be the place for her, so that is where she's looking to go, and we're very, very proud of her, and so we want to congratulate her and her family and to keep up.
Thank you, Commissioner Saipul, and congratulations to that.
Yeah, that's fabulous. And Mayor, I do have one last thing, very quickly.
Please.
Vice Mayor Schwartz mentioned the unfortunate circumstance of a young one-and-a-half-year-old, young little girl, a little infant that drowned, and you all know how hard, and I always have appreciated support from my colleagues and all of you at the city, how hard I have worked to continue to bring water safety awareness, you know, into the city and promote that in all of our events, promoted it when we used to be able to attend, you know, Student of the Month, and I was able to hand out, you know, to the students their little medallions for, you know, being water watchers and all that, but Mayor, if this is not the proper time, I would ask you to let me know when the proper time is. I want to make a motion about some water safety, so if you'd like, I will hold off and do that at the time unless you think now might be the time, Mayor.
I think, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. The city has, through the years, we have always committed to, and we have the fabulous YMCA, and we, in the city, we do our own swim lessons, and we promote that, but, you know, we're coming up into Florida here now with summer months, and even though we're in COVID, people are trying to get out and trying to do things, and even just accidental stuff that happens. So, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, and I would hope that I would have unanimous support from my colleagues, that we reaffirm the city's commitment to bringing awareness to water safety and that we continue supporting and providing swim lessons and water safety lessons to anyone in our community that chooses to take those lessons.
Okay, is there a second? Second to Commissioner Saipul's motion?
Second.
Commissioner Good seconds the motion. Any discussion? Hearing none. City Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Saipul?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Continue.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Commissioner Saipul.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Thank you. City Clerk, any items to be pulled from the agenda?
No items, Mayor.
How about at the request of the public?
There's an item at the request of the public, and I believe the individual may be calling in. Shane Sutton.
Okay. Mr. Bonilla?
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you. Shane Sutton, if you can please, I do not see you on the WebEx platform, but if you're calling in, you can, please, if you could please press star three to raise your hand, and then I will unmute you. Again, please press star three to raise your hand. This is for Shane Sutton.
No?
Nope.
All right. How about announce the board and committee appointment, City Clerk?
No announcements, Mayor.
I consent to agenda. Item 1 through 13. What is your pleasure?
I'll move.
Is a motion by- Who is that?
Saipul?
Castillo.
Who made the motion?
Castillo.
Commissioner Castillo made the motion. Commissioner Saipul, you seconded?
No, no, Mayor. I had a poll.
Go ahead. What is it?
That's why I actually have three polls: two, seven, and 14.
That's not a quasi judicial. City Clerk, is that under the consent?
Mr. Mayor, if I may quickly, Mayor, if I may respond?
Go ahead.
Yeah. The answer is, it is quasi. However, if it's polled by a commission member, or polled by the applicant, or polled by a member of the public, it is no longer consent, so it would be heard as a full quasi item, and I'm assuming for discussion that staff is prepared to go forward, and the applicant or the applicant's counsel or both are also so prepared, so that would then allow the matter to be heard as a full item, Commissioner Saipul.
Okay. Any other polls? All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Castillo to approve the consent agenda without items 2, 7, 2, 7, and 14. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Saipul. Discussion?
Yes, Castillo.
Commissioner Castillo, go ahead. On discussion.
I didn't poll 14 because I didn't see it on consent. We need to be clearer about this, Mr. Dodge. Your agenda should say either consent quasi judicial or regular quasi judicial, but we can't assume that quasi judicial is part of consent if it doesn't say so. Now, I wasn't, when I saw quasi judicial agenda and then the item, I figured that was a separate agenda than consent. I mentioned it, that if we want to have quasi judicial items in consent, we should list them that way. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, that item is listed as a quasi judicial, not a consent item.
Well, it was just-
City Attorney, any questions?
If I may, Mr. Mayor and Commission, very simply, under section 37.14 of the city's code, there is a carve-out, which is referred to as the consent process. If the applicant and the staff agree on the recommendation, and the applicant has no objection, and the staff has no objection, and there are no public commentators, and no commissioner otherwise pulls the item, it can be considered a consent quasi item. If it's polled by a commissioner or polled by the applicant, or if there's not agreement between the applicant and the city staff, then it transitions automatically under the code section to a full hearing. So, the consequence-
What other information?
Saipul?
Hold on, hold on. Continue, City Attorney, please.
The language in the section specifically says, "The applicant, any city commissioner, or any member of the public may request that an application for development approval be removed from the quasi judicial consent agenda and accept as otherwise provided for in subsection C below, such items shall be continued to the quasi judicial items portion of the meeting, where at such other date and time or both is mutually agreed upon by the applicant and the city commission." And what this city has done is that if there is, again, no objection between the applicant and staff and the recommendation, and the absence of a pulling of the item by a member of the commission, by a member of the applicant's staff, or by staff, the item would be otherwise consent agenda, but because of the fact that Commissioner Saipul, in her rightful sense, under 37.14B, has made the request, it can be pulled.
All right. So, we now have-
May I mention, Mayor, Schwartz?
May I question Mayor Schwartz?
By the way, if I may, Mr. Commissioners, just to be sure, if you look at, at the bottom section of the, of the hard printed agenda, it says quasi judicial, quasi consent agenda, which is a tip off that suggests that it's quasi consent until it's not. So it's now not, the end result of which it's a full hearing.
Okay, go ahead. Commissioner, Vice Mayor's, Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, sir.
I, I can appreciate your explanation. However, the bold face on the printed copy that's in your books says quasi judicial agenda. In parentheses at the bottom, it says consent agenda. And I don't think that's good form. Now, you don't make these agendas. The city manager and the city clerk approve the agendas, but I, I did not see this as a, I still don't see it as a consent agenda item. I saw one through thirteen. And based on our discussions leading up to this meeting, particularly on this item, there was never a discussion that it was on consent either. So I was expecting a full, just a, just a regular hearing on this, despite whoever agrees with who. To me, this, I, I thought this was a regular, regular item, like perhaps-
Okay. It's going to be pulled, it's going to be pulled either way. So, okay, do I have a second for the consent agenda?
I, we could have that already, Mayor.
Commissioner Seiple seconds the consent agenda?
Yes, I did.
You have, you have a question on the consent?
No, sir. I seconded it.
Okay, I thought you said you had a second. Okay, is there a discussion? City Clerk, call a roll, please.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Seiple?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Commissioner Seiple, item two, please.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. And, and just a little comment about the discussion we just had. Parts of-
Listen, Commissioner Seiple, go right to item two, please. That's on the board right now.
Motion to release performance bond letter of credit, number FGAC dash one nine three oh seven, in the amount of one one eight three oh three four point four one, from Fidelity Guarantee and Acceptance Corp. from Lennar Homes LLC, accept the bill of sale, easement dedication, and maintenance bond letter of credit, number FGAC dash two one zero zero eight, in the amount of seventy-eight two oh nine point sixty, which is twenty percent of the certified cost for the water and sewer infrastructure, plus thirty-three thousand five hundred for the cost of the future installation of a twenty-four inch butterfly valve at Sienna Townhomes at Pembroke Pines.
All right, is there a second to the motion? Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Go ahead, Commissioner Seiple.
Yes, I just had a very quick question, Mayor, and, and I did speak with Mr. Dodge, but I wasn't quite, I wasn't quite understanding of the, of the answer after I read a little bit more. I would just like if, if, if you look at the second page of this item, and it's listed as number four, it says Lennar will be increasing the bond amount by an additional thirty-three thousand five hundred for a twenty-four inch butterfly valve required for looping of the water system. And then it says it wouldn't happen if they were not able to purchase and development of the adjacent property. I would like for someone to explain to us a little bit more what actually they're asking for with this looping of the water system.
Mr. Dodge?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, John Cooper is on the line. He can explain the reason for the butterfly valve.
Mr. Cooper?
Mr. Mayor, good evening, and good evening, Commissioners. This is John Cooper.
Go ahead, sir.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sir. Madam Commissioner, the question is related to a valve that is sitting in between, in between two pieces of property. And the initial project came in which warranted the valve, and we were intending to do that, but the same developer now is taking the property next door. And should that proceed, then the fire looping will be accomplished by the, by that next door property, and there will be no longer a need for the valve. So it seemed to be wasteful to make them put it in, in the phase one, when, you know, maybe a few months later, it wouldn't be needed at all. So instead of putting it in, we had it bonded for the future. In case that plan falls through, we'll be able to have them put in the valve.
Commissioner Seiple?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Whether they end up purchasing the other piece of property or not, they will be provided ample method of, of water and all of that through what they're doing.
Yes, ma'am.
And there's no effect to, what would happen if they don't purchase that property and someone else should purchase it and want to develop it? Would this then be like a, a community butterfly? Or how would that work?
How that would work, ma'am, is that we would go ahead and proceed with the, the proposed valve and its proposed location, because we don't want to wait forever for that development. We don't have a future timeline for it. But because we have a timeline coming from this developer, it makes sense to hold off. But if the other one doesn't go, we'll be proceeding with the subject valve and installing it.
Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
Further discussion, item two. Hearing none. City Clerk, call a roll, please.
Commissioner Seiple?
Yes.
Mayor Ordis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Commissioner Seiple, item seven.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Motion to award IFB number AD dash two oh dash oh five Clorox Total Three Sixty electrostatic sprayers to the most responsive responsible bidder, the Home Depot Pro, in the amount not to exceed forty-one thousand nine eighty-eight.
Is there a second?
Second, Commissioner Good.
Yes, second by Commissioner Good. Commissioner Seiple, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. And I, I do want to say that I, you know, was contacted by a few people that, other companies that were representing themselves as having bid on this and had questions. Really have very much discussion with them, actually, but they did forward me some, some email information that I did, that I did read. So I just wanted to say that. My, my real question here is what we're looking for, and this, I guess would be to city manager. What we're looking for, our item tonight, has nothing to do with supplies, or, or chemicals, or anything after. It's strictly looking for the equipment, the sprayer equipment. Is that correct? Is that what was put out for bid?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Mr. Dodge.
Yes, the item that was put out for bid were the equipment. This is a grant we received, which the grant specified that particular type of equipment. Mr. Gomes can address that a little further, and I also have Chief Pendle from the Fire Department that can address their choice in this grant application, particular piece of equipment. So if you, if you would like additional information, they're both available to address it.
Okay, Ms. Mayor, Mr. Dodge, really the item tonight that's before us is the bid that went out, not the supplies, the, the couples and stuff that wouldn't be needed later, which I would assume would be a different item that would be discussed. Is that correct?
I would like Mr. Gomes to reaffirm that. That is my understanding. Mark?
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. This is Mark Gomes, procurement director of the city of Pembroke Pines. That is correct. This item is just for the purchase of the equipment. If we needed to buy the supplies, the disinfectants that would go into the equipment, we'd buy that separately.
Thank you, Mr. Gomes, Commissioner.
Yes, and just one last question to, to Mr. Dodge. I know you mentioned it, and it is in our backup, that this was, this was a grant. And the grant, did the grant specify that it was this, it was this type of, of equipment that we're talking about?
That is correct.
Okay, so if that's not it, then the grant is not available. Correct?
That was the requirement of the grant. I would believe that would be the case since that, those were the specifications when we went out for bid.
Okay, and the value of that, I know the grant was somewhere in the eighty thousand, and we were looking at spending around forty, something out of that, correct? Forty-one nine eighty-eight out of that?
The number on there for the total is forty-one thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. That's my questions. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Benioff, I understand we have a resident wants to speak?
Thank you, Mayor. We have Thomas Whittenman. I will, I will unmute you. Please state your name, address, and you have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hi, thank you, Thomas. Thank you. My name is Thomas Whittenman. I'm a colleague of Lisa Walsh, who is, is based near Pembroke Pines. I'm reaching out, excuse me, Madam Commissioner and Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the time. I'm reaching out to talk about the electrostatic community. One thing I do want to bring to light in the difference between the different quotes presented to the city is a limitation with one of the options presented. Our competitive option, the Clorox Total Three Sixty, is restrictive on the chemistry that can be used with that system. And that system requires a much more expensive and harder, harder to acquire chemistry. If you compare it to the alternatives, alternative equipment that can use a variety of chemistry options, including concentrate chemistry, it will significantly reduce your total cost of ownership. For example, doing a quick calculation between ready to use chemistry and concentrate chemistry, the concentrate chemistry can reduce the operating cost by over ninety percent. Doing a calculation, if you were to do ten thousand square feet, five days a week, fifty weeks for a, of a year, using ready to use chemistry will cost over eight thousand dollars versus concentrate will cost a hundred and twenty-one. We'd be happy to share this, this metrics. I'm just trying to advise that I, I think the, to consider looking at the total cost of ownership of the equipment, and not just the, the initial price difference of the product.
Thank you very much. Okay, further discussion on item seven. Hearing none. City Clerk, call a roll, please.
Commissioner Seiple?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We're on item fourteen, Commissioner Seiple.
Thank you, Mayor. Motion to-
Mr. Mayor, if I may interrupt the Commissioner, if you like, I can introduce this because now this is an item that's on the regular agenda as a quasi item.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
May I read, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, City Attorney.
Thank you. Item number fourteen, for the record, is a motion to approve the Pines Village Market Residences. As recommended by the Planning and Zoning Board, generally located south of Pines Boulevard and east of Dykes Road, it is no longer a quasi judicial consent item. It is a full item. If I may briefly give the commission the rules of the road to make sure that we're on the same page. This is a specific site plan request under section thirty-seven point zero three, references a quasi judicial matter. Site-specific rezoning or site plan, and would require a full hearing as required by law in the, in the city's Code of Ordinances under chapter thirty-seven. To the extent possible, you will be motivated, and you'll listen to competent and substantial evidence during the course of the hearing. The order of businesses that the staff will make a presentation, they will submit to the Mayor and Commission any PowerPoints, evidence, testimony, or backup materials, either consistent with the Planning and Zoning Board review, or additional information that may be provided during this evening's presentation. Any and all documents or materials that were previously offered up to the city through the applicant or through others is also a part of the record this evening. The applicant will also have the opportunity to present, either through counsel or a representative, including the individual representatives of the actual applicant group. To the extent possible, Mayor and Commission, any affected party, and affected parties are defined under the terms of the, the code, which are any person or persons, natural or corporate, who is the owner of the subject property, or who owns property within five hundred feet of the subject property, as listed in the records of the county property appraiser, or resides in or operates a business within five hundred feet of the subject property. Those, quote, affected parties have the right to be sworn. They can inquire of witnesses. Their testimony and evidence also must be both competent and substantial. Not hearsay, although limitedly it can be, but it must be, in fact, competent and substantial evidence. So that there'll be the staff's presentation, the applicant's presentation, affected parties, and then, of course, a public hearing for those who are not affected parties, but who came to tonight's meeting to, to at least speak their mind and offer up their comments and notes, but it's not what's defined as competent or substantial evidence. To the extent that you need to do so at the beginning of the meeting, you have to make your required disclosures under section thirty-seven point ten, if you had what's called an ex parte communication. An ex parte communication is better known as an oral communication with the applicant, or the applicant's counsel, or someone from the applicant's group. They're not presumed to be legally prejudicial, not presumed to be prejudicial, so long as there's a provided disclosure on the record, which is made by the Commissioner. So the mayor will no doubt ask himself and other members of the commission if were there any disclosures to be made on the record. And the substance of any ex parte communication with a local public official, such as yourselves, that relates to a quasi item, not presumed to be presidential to the action if the subject of the communication and the identity of the person, the group or the entity with whom the communication took place is disclosed and made part of the public record, which will happen this evening. If you hadn't disclosed or, or representation, you need not do that. At some point in time, Mayor, once you conclude listening to the public, and listening to the city staff, listening, professional staff, listening to the applicant and their folks, and any member of the public who's an affected party, you close the public hearing, and the commission may deliberate on the process. I know that Mr. Stan is poised to testify, as may be other members of his staff. Mr. Stan, is that correct?
Mr. Stan? Yes, sir. Good evening. Mike Stan, Planning and Economic Development Director.
You, you can't testify yet. You did not been sworn. And then, to the applicant group, Mayor and Commission, is that Mr. Mealy that's here on behalf of the applicant? Is Mr. Mealy present?
Yes, this is Dennis Mealy. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, and we're ready to go.
All right, let me ask you a question, Mr. Mealy, if I can, through the Mayor and Commission. Do you have any other witness who you intend to call this evening who we need to swear in? And if so, please identify who they are, and allow the clerk to swear them in at the beginning of this proceeding. Who else besides yourself, Mr. Mealy?
I don't anticipate anyone else at this time.
Okay, in the event, however, in the, in the, in the event that there may be a need for other witnesses, are others from your group that might be available if needed? You can say yes or no.
No, I'm just looking to see who's not. That's all. No, I don't think at this point, I don't think that anybody else will be testifying.
Okay. Mr. Mayor and Commission, if you will permit the clerk at them, at this point, to swear in the witnesses? Madam Clerk, if you like, I, I can do it, or you can do it, whatever you prefer, to those members of the public and those who are affected parties, if you will. Are there any affected parties that have been notified that intend to testify this evening? Mr. Benioff, do you have people that are logged in who intend to testify?
Thank you, City Attorney. At this moment, I don't have anybody that's raised their hand. And if somebody has called in and would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand by pressing star three in order to be able to speak.
Okay. The Mayor and Commission, to the extent that there'll be speakers that'll come later in the proceeding, we will get back to them and give them full access rights. So at this time, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, Madam Clerk, if you will swear in the witnesses, I'd appreciate that. If not, I'm happy to assist you in that regard.
Thank you, City Attorney.
Raise your right hands. Stan?
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear off them that you're testing, and you're about to give, showing the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do is the best answer. Thank you all very much. Mr. Mayor, the first speaker would be Mr. Stan, who is the director of the department, and he's prepared to proceed with your permission, Mayor and Commission.
All right, let's get it on the table first. We have a motion by Commissioner Seifel. Is there a second? Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Okay, for discussion, City Attorney, go ahead.
Mayor, I'm having tremendous heat. Someone's got an oven mic or something.
Mr. Benioff? It fixed it. Okay. All right, did you want to speak, Vice Mayor?
I didn't hear, Mayor. Thank you. I think we're fixed.
The doctor seems to have subsided Mayor, and Mr. Sam is poised to present on behalf of the City of Pembroke Pines as the Director of the Department. Mr. Stan?
Mr. Stan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Mike Stan, Director of Planning and Economic Development. Tonight before you is the site plan for the project known as Pines Market, sixteen thousand Pines Market, specifically the residential component of the former USPS project. As the Commission all knows, this property was purchased by the city and put under contract with the Terra Group. The Terra Group is developing a commercial center on the northern portion of the parcel. And on the southern portion of the parcel, we have a townhome community being proposed. This item was approved via land use in terms of units, zoning with a flex allocation at previous meetings. The staff report and agenda item outlines the types of units, the locations of units, as well as provides backup for the site plan. It's on the online version of the item. There is also an economic analysis, the financial impact that this project will have on our community, attached to the agenda item. I do know that Mr. Mealy has a presentation, which I will queue up at the appropriate time. In terms of my presentation, staff has reviewed this site plan, and it meets code requirements. It went on to the Planning and Zoning Board, who had a positive recommendation on this item. And again, following in line with the land use, zoning, plat, this site plan is compliant with all of those items. Mr. City Attorney, I don't have anything else at this moment in time. I know Mr. Mealy has a presentation available.
Mayor, if I may inquire, Mr. Stan, for the record, so whatever documents or materials that were submitted to the Planning and Zoning Board and any other items which you otherwise produced are also being published to the City Commission this evening as supporting documentation for the city's recommendation, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And you highlighted what they were and the other elements of your suggested positive recommendation. Yes, sir?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
Thank you, Mayor. Unless you have any questions, Mr. Mealy would go next.
Thank you. Thank you. Dennis Mealy, two hundred East Borough Boulevard, on behalf of the applicant. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Okay, so we have a PowerPoint presentation that I would ask if Mr. Stan could pull it up. And this would be, these would all be exhibits on behalf of our application for the record tonight. But I'd like to review for a moment what we've done prior to tonight. So as Mr. Stan mentioned, this property has been properly zoned. We had an MXD zoning that we had to amend, which we have done. And you may recall, we had those two hearings. And we previously had a larger number of dwelling units. We reduced it to one-hundred-and-sixty-five. We also committed to pay five-hundred-thousand dollars for the traffic signal on Dykes Road and Seventh Street. And if that traffic signal wasn't warranted, the city could use that same five-hundred-thousand dollars for any traffic improvements in the area. And we would pay that amount at the time of the first building permit. If we could go to the next slide, please. We also have the contribution to the city's affordable housing fund also paid at first building permit. Mr. Stan, can we go to the next slide, please? So this shows you the property. I know we all know where it is, so we'll move on to the next slide, please. Just zeroing in on it a little bit more. I think that's sufficient for that. We'll go to the next one. Okay, so this is what it looked like when the post office was on the property. And just giving you a little statistics on how big it was and how many trips were associated with it. It was a twenty-four-hour day operation. And you see that the post office building and the parking covered a substantial portion of the property, particularly down all the way to the south end. We'll go to the next slide, please. So this is the site plan for the one-hundred-and-sixty-five units. Those little yellow striped areas are guest parking, parallel parking in the roadway, distributed throughout the site, in addition to the two-car driveway and one-car garage at each townhome unit. So we have quite a bit of extra parking, guest parking, provided throughout the development. You see also how we have cross-access between the residential and the commercial so that you can go back and forth between the two portions of the property without going out to Dykes Road. We'll go to the next slide, please. So this zeroes in on the site plan. And I want to point out that this site plan complies one-hundred percent with the approved MXD. We have no variances. We have no waivers. We have no relief. We have no alternative design. We're doing everything pursuant to the approved MXD. It's also one-hundred percent in compliance with the land use plan and the plat for the property. And I think you'll notice that this is exactly the same plan that we showed when we were before you on the second reading of the MXD rezoning. No changes. Everything's shown exactly the same. I also want to point out that at the Planning and Zoning Board meeting, we had a number of public speakers who spoke in favor of the project. In fact, a couple of the board members remarked that it was unusual to have so many calls in in favor. And the Planning and Zoning Board, I believe unanimously, recommended approval of this site plan. We'll go to the next slide, please. So one of the other things that Mr. Stan asked us to do and the Planning and Zoning Board asked us to do was do more with our architectural elevations, add more color, add more movement vertically and horizontally. And so this is showing you the revised design. And in the upper right-hand corner are some of the colors and materials for the various portions of the property. We'll go to the next slide, please. And this is the rear elevation. Again, the same thing that we've done here is adding additional architectural elements to give the building more interest on the back side as well as the front side. We'll go to the next slide, please. So this is another development that has been built or is under construction in the city. And the reason we're showing this is people had remarked, if you look at those two buildings that are along the water, that the rear elevation was too plain. And that's why we added a lot of those elements that I was just showing a moment ago on the rear elevations for this development so that it wouldn't be too plain. And the Planning and Zoning Board had favorable comments in that regard. If we go to the next slide, please. That's just a close-up of the building at the other development that was too plain. Then again, it's showing you why we added the elements we did to make sure that we had those architectural interests there. So if you go to the next one, this shows you our clubhouse and pool. You can see the clubhouse. The pool's obviously behind the clubhouse. You can kind of see the water going through the doorway there. If we go to the next one. You recall that there is a landscaped wetland area between us and our closest neighbors to the south who live in Pembroke Shores. And this is just showing you a view of that area. If you were in the Pembroke Shores neighborhood and looking north towards us, you see the little bits of rooftops. We got a favorable reaction from some of our neighbors to the south because the previously approved plan, although it was fewer units, the units lined up all along the southern property line, and the rooftops would have been much more visible. That's one of the positives of the plan, the changes that we made to the plan. We'll go to the next slide, please. So this is just showing you a typical floor plan, a reason, or typical building with different floor plans. The reason we show this is when you look at the overall site plan, you get the impression that each of these buildings is just one rectangle. Well, they're not. Depending on which unit someone buys, you see how the building moves in and out, both the front and the back. So it's not just a plain rectangle. We'll go to the next slide, please. So that being said, I just want to reiterate again, this site plan complies with the code in every respect. There are no deviations. There are no variances. There is no relief being requested. And the reason I keep repeating that is there's a body of law on this subject that if a site plan complies with the code and there is no relief being requested, that the applicant is entitled to approval. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. If there's any public comment, I'd like the opportunity to respond as appropriate. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mealy. Questions for Mr. Mealy? Questions? Hearing none. City Clerk, call a roll. Who is that?
Seifel.
Do we have a discussion? Commissioner Seifel, we can't understand you at all.
I have some questions for Mr. Mealy.
Okay. Mr. Mealy? Commissioner Seifel has a question.
Yes, Commissioner.
Hi, good evening, guys. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good, thank you. I did have a couple of questions. I know when we had discussion before, one of the questions that was asked was the price of the homes. And you did state that they were in the mid to three hundreds.
Let's take a second. The mid-three-fift, mid-three hundreds to mid-four hundreds.
Okay, because I see now in your paperwork that you submitted, that Lenore submitted, that the average price is four-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand, six-sixty-three. Is that correct?
Yes, and I will tell you, Commissioner, that the way house sales are going right now, I'm not surprised that the number's higher than it was last month.
Okay, could you tell me, nothing was ever mentioned before about an HOA cost or other expenses for a resident in the community? Can you talk about that a little bit?
We will have a homeowners association, and we anticipate that the dues will be similar to what you're seeing in other townhome communities in the City of Pembroke Pines.
And what would be a number for that? Because I'm not, I don't know those numbers.
I don't really know what the monthly dues costs are.
Okay, are there any other expenses that would be included in there, you know, that would be part of that that you all have anticipated?
Well, I mean, just the standard expenses that any homeowner would have, you know, water and sewer and electric and...
I'm talking about specific to HOA, you know, and HOA, not them individually.
No, you know, for example, we're not doing a community development district or anything like that here. So it's just regular HOA dues and your regular taxes and expenses for living there.
Okay, and I did want to clarify one thing. It was said earlier about the recommendation that came from the PNC to the Commission. It's my understanding or what I remember was that was came from the PNC approval for a hundred-and-twenty-five townhomes with fifteen flex units. Is that not correct?
Well, that was their recommendation to you for the MXD rezoning. Now that the MXD rezoning was approved by City Commission, we went back to the PNC, and the recommendation on the site plan was unanimous. On the site plan that you have here tonight was unanimous.
Okay, and I just, just a statement that I'd like to make, and I hope everybody can remember that when this project was, when this originally was being discussed, this is...
Having issues with Commissioner Seifel's audio again.
Yeah, Commissioner Seifel, you're inter...
I don't think it's me, because I hear a lot of static from somebody else.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I want to, I just want to remind everybody or bring back to everybody's memory that when this property was originally looked at by the city, everybody knows the story of the bus depot and the city coming in and all of that. I don't want to rehash all of that. But I do remember sitting in City Manager Dodge's conference room at the Old City Hall where we had eleven vendors that came in to look at purchasing this property. And there were two vendors at the time that were proposing single-family residence. And we ended up selling to the Terra Group based upon that original presentation, which you all remember, was for a hundred-and-twenty-five, one-million-dollar, single-family homes. And so I want to bring that to everybody's attention again, that that's what we started out with. And clearly, we have totally gone off of that. We are now looking at a hundred-and-sixty-five. Well, the commercial was always going to be there. The residential commercial was going to be there. But we are looking at, you know, something that's very, very, much more than what we, what our intent was when we sold the property, what was the selling point. There were eleven vendors that came in. We could have chosen, as a group, the commission at the time could have chosen any of those that had other plans, townhomes, condos, whatever they were proposing to us. But our selling point and our comfort level was a hundred-and-twenty-five single-family homes that were upscale, and we felt that would fit more into the community, the surrounding communities. And now we are so far off of that. And I just, I just need to remind folks that that's not what we started out with. It is way off of what we even told residents that we were looking to do and that they should consider that that's what would be in their community. And even financially, if your, if your average price of a home, Mr. Mealy, is four-hundred-and-thirteen, six-sixty-three, and you got a hundred-and-sixty-five of them, just even your sale price is like sixty-eight million dollars. If you had a hundred-and-twenty-five single-family billion-dollar homes, you're looking at a hundred-and-twenty-five million dollars on sale. So I'm just not quite sure what the reasoning was. I still can't quite understand the change of it. And just one last comment, Mayor, and then I'll finish. It's always brought up about the traffic, and traffic is a huge, huge issue for me and for my residents. And it's brought up always in these graphs that we get, that when the old post office was there, it generated eleven thousand trips a day for the old post office. And I will, again, my opinion on that is, okay, maybe it was eleven thousand trips a day, but guess what? Those trips were spread out all over the day. They were not at peak times. They were not at morning. They were not at mid-afternoon. And they were clearly not at coming home from work time, which is going to be the huge, huge traffic problem that we are going to have there. And so I think that sometimes the way things are presented are not presented in the most correct way. Not that they're not factual in some ways, but I do have to just say that that doesn't hold a lot of water for me, and I don't think, I don't think residents out west are comfortable with any of this going on. I know that there have been a number of phone calls of folks calling in saying, oh, we're looking forward to this. One, if I remember, said he wants to because he wants to get work there. Another one called because they want to downsize. Well, I'm not sure how you downsize. Maybe you downsize in square footage of your unit because you're, what you're coming from to there. But you're clearly at this price, not downsizing in price. And then an HOA dues on top of it, which I'm sure will be quite costly if it even begins to match any of the surrounding ones. So Mayor, while I have great respect for Mr. Mealy and for Lenore and the folks, you know, Terra Group and all of that, I just, I just am very taken aback at this whole, at this whole project and how it has come about. It is not what we promised our people. It's not what we sold this whole concept on. It's not what was sold to us as a commission. And so I have great difficulty with this, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mealy?
Yes, sir.
When the project was proposed to the city, we all, the majority, liked the single-family homes. But you want to explain what happened, the time period, some of the, some of the water, water pipes or something we had to wait for? What was the reason it went from the single-family homes to the, to the townhomes?
So Mayor, a couple of things. First, I do recall there were a number of bidders. I think the eleven is probably the right number, as Commissioner said. My recollection was that they had two bidders tied at the same price. One of them was Terra, who was proposing commercial and a hundred-and-twenty-five single-family homes. And one of them was another bidder at the same price, who was proposing commercial, including a gas station, and was proposing almost two hundred townhomes. And so the city did select Terra. Now, as the mayor pointed out, we spent a year and a half getting an easement that should have already been there from the owner of the Grand Homes Golf Course. I'm not talking about the HOA now. I'm talking about the owner of the golf course. Took us a year and a half to get that. We had to spend considerable money to make improvements to facilitate what that property owner wanted. We did come back to the city. We negotiated an amendment to the purchase and sale agreement that provided for the commercial development to basically remain what it is today and with the finishing of that, and also provided for approximately one-hundred-and-eighty-two townhomes. and with the finishing of that, and also provided for approximately one hundred and eighty-two townhomes. Uh, so of course, we lowered that to one sixty-five. We added the five hundred thousand dollar payment for traffic improvements or traffic signal. We added the payment of five hundred dollars per unit for affordable housing. Uh, and that's what we're back here with now. Um, and I know we've had a number of meetings in the community. We have a support letter from the Grand Palms Homeowners Association. And so that's what brings us to today.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mealy. President's Question, I am fourteen.
Mr. Mayor? It's just, if I may interrupt just for a minute, we also need to go to the public, as you know, at some point. Any affected party that might have dialed in, called in, emailed in, et cetera, needs to be given their, their, their due, as well as any other member of the public who arrived this evening to speak for or against the applicant's project. Thank you, Mayor.
Eric Castillo, information, please.
Go ahead, Commissioner Castillo.
Thank you very much. The, uh, city attorney had indicated that we have a duty to disclose any contacts. At what point are you going to entertain that? Before or after the, uh, the public just talks?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Mayor, I may, Mr. Commissioner, the answer is that at, at the beginning of the presentation, I indicated that the code requires any, any disclosure required of any one of you of having what's called ex parte communications, oral communications with the applicant, the applicant's counsel or others. At some point, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, you need to disclose that by going down the line, yourself included, uh, whether there were such points of contact as a matter of law in, in the city's Code of Ordinances.
I was waiting, I was waiting for that opportunity.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, Mr. Benioff?
Thank you, Mayor.
Is this the opportunity?
Opportunity for what, Commissioner Castillo?
To disclose, Mayor, to disclose any contacts with the applicant, having any oral communications before this evening's hearing, which would be helpful to be disclosed now before the public gets to be heard.
All right, shall we, shall we go down each commissioner and ask?
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, city attorney, city clerk, let's go to each commissioner, see if they had a disclosure.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Castillo, did you have any contact with the applicant?
I was contacted by, uh, Mr. Mealy about the project.
Commissioner Goode, did you have any contact with the applicant?
I have not had any contact with the applicant since, uh, first reading.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Schwartz, did you have any contact with the applicant?
I did not make contact between first and second reading. And Mayor, I'd like to weigh in before the public, please.
Thank you. Commissioner Cyple, did you have any contact with the applicant?
Oh, I had nothing, uh, since original discussion back on first reading. I did have a phone message that brought Mr. Mealy to give him a call. Unfortunately, or fortunately, we, 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 I did not attempt to call him back. So no, I, I have, I have not had.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordis, did you have any contact with the applicant?
Yes, Mr. Mealy called me about his items and explained his position, and that's what I did.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Vice Mayor, you wanted to comment?
Uh, yeah, I had a, uh, dude, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mr. Mealy, good evening.
Good evening.
Yo, I'm trying to figure out who the, who the talker is here. I think you might have the echo. Um, the, you, um, on the record, you indicated the history of why we went from single-family to townhouse. Is that correct?
I did, yes.
And that was presented to the commission on June nineteenth, twenty twenty, correct?
I don't recall the exact date, but that sounds about right.
And the city commission, consisting of all five of us currently on the commission, voted for that amendment?
Um, Commissioner, I see right here on the backup that it was actually June nineteenth of twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mealy. So, June nineteenth of, uh, ju- uh, June of two thousand nineteen, all five of us were in a public setting, brought up to date on the delay and the reason for going to townhouse, is that correct?
Yes, I'm, I'm looking at the first page of the backup for this evening and paragraph four at the bottom of the page describes that meeting and the items that were included in the Fourth Amendment.
So any member of the public who may believe that the item was not discussed and reported by this commission, uh, at this point, we need to look back at that support from June of two thousand nineteen, correct? That's the reason why your, your client moved forward with the, uh, the, correct?
Right, after that approval of the Fourth Amendment, uh, we went back to the drawing boards on our plans. Uh, we came in with plans at one eighty-two. We worked with staff. We lowered them, uh, further from the one eighty-two. Uh, then we had, um, additional discussions with neighbors. And then we came up with the plan for one sixty-five.
And the planning and zoning board heard the item and ordered unanimously?
Um, as, as Commissioner Cyple pointed out earlier, when the planning and zoning board was reviewing the MXT rezoning, they had recommended a hundred and forty, uh, townhomes, a hundred and twenty-five plus the fifteen, uh, flex units. However, after the city commission approved the MXT rezoning, when we went back to the PNC, they unanimously recommended approval of the site plan. By the way, I should have pointed out earlier, uh, that they, uh, asked us to accommodate something with some overhangs and some additional architectural treatment, which we did incorporate into the plan.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mealy. And through the mayor to Mr. Stam, uh, who were the members of the planning and zoning board that voted unanimously?
Mike Stam, Planning and Economic Development's Director. I need to review the minutes. Um, I do in, I do believe that it was our regular board members. Henry Rose is the chair. John Jacob is the vice chair. Paul Gerillo is a board member. Linda Gonzalez is a board member. And Rosalie Lepate is a regular war- board member. I don't know if anybody was absent that night. I'd have to go back and review the minutes. But I do recall that it was a unanimous vote.
So they, okay, so, and if it was an alternate, that would be the mayor, correct?
Yeah, either Mr. Taylor or Dr. Littman.
So, as far as your recollection, Mr. Stam, the, the regular sitting board members of the PNC appointed by each individual district commissioner participated in this process?
That was my understanding. And as Mr. Mealy referred to, they made the recommendation to add additional treatments, like, um, I believe, if I can, my recollection was that Mr. Rose, for example, asked about the porches being put on the back of the project. And during the presentation, you saw that those porches were added to the back of some of the buildings, uh, as part of some of those models. That's the way I recall the conversation occurring.
Thank you, Mr. Stam. And going back to Mr. Mealy, uh, and this is my, my final inquiry, uh, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Mealy, uh, there was a statement regarding the drive time, AM, PM, about the eleven, uh, for that, for the twenty-four hour day. Explain to me, uh, I'm sorry, explain to the commission, please. Who does, and, and is there any, um, are there any, uh, MP and track compared to when the post office was there?
Um, so, uh, let me answer that in two ways. Uh, first, we presented a traffic study, uh, which, or traffic generation data, which was reviewed, prepared by our traffic engineer, Joaquin Vargas, and reviewed by your engineers and traffic engineers, and they concurred with his numbers. Those numbers showed that not only did we have less traffic than the post office, AM peak, PM peak and average daily, meaning morning rush hour, evening rush hour and daily traffic, we were lower than the post office. But also, with the combination of development we were building, we were less traffic than the previously approved plan. In addition, uh, this is in an area of the county, because it's west of I-75, that when you do a plat, the county also looks at the traffic data and they look at traffic concurrency in the old-fashioned way that has been done for years. Remember that there's county east of I-75, you just pay a fee. They don't do that. The county has also confirmed that we are not increasing the traffic and we have no traffic concurrency issues.
All right, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, I need, uh, yeah, Mr. Mealy, are there any, are there any concerns that you have about misinformation or misunderstanding in the public sphere that you would like to, uh, clarify? Uh, put on the for at this point?
Uh, I will, I will tell you that, uh, we've had a number of meetings with different neighbors, throughout the time of talking about this project, and I think everybody understands exactly what we're doing. Some people like it, some people don't. But I don't think there's any misunderstanding about what we're proposing to do. Now, I know earlier there was discussion about the, uh, journey that you've been on with this contract and, you know, what was originally opposed, proposed and how you evaluated it. But I, I do think that my client has been very clear at each step. When he did have to come back and ask for an amendment, uh, the one that was approved in two thousand nineteen, he, you know, disclosed everything that had happened and made it clear why he was asking for it. So I don't, I don't think there's any mis-, uh, misinformation out there.
All right, Mr. Benioff, can we have some speakers, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we have a, we have a speaker online, uh, but before, oh, we actually have two speakers. Uh, but before, uh, just to make sure that everybody, uh, knows the rules, please make sure to raise your hand to the WebEx platform. And if you're calling in and would like to speak, please make sure to press star three to raise your hand. Uh, I will then, uh, call up on your name. Uh, for the first speaker, let's go with Guillermo Medina. Um, I will mute you. Please state your name, address, and, uh, you have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hello, evening.
Go ahead.
Uh, my name is Guillermo Medina. My address is three six zero Northwest 153rd Avenue. Can you hear me? Sorry?
We can hear you, sir.
Yes.
Hello?
We can hear you, sir.
Go ahead, mute him, fine.
Oh, okay, sorry about skipping a little bit. So, sorry, my name is Guillermo Medina. My address is three six zero Northwest 153rd Avenue, Pembroke Pines, Florida, three three zero two eight. Um, I just wanted to, again, show my support for this item. I thought this was approved, um, the last time that we met and spoke about it. Uh, but I saw it was on the agenda again. Uh, I think, um, that this is a fair plan and I think it's the right thing to do. Uh, thank you for letting me speak again and everybody have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Benioff?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, please lower your hand if you've spoken already, so we can move on to the next person. Uh, Kim Tyler, please, uh, state your name and address. I will mute you. You have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Uh, yes, hello, uh, my name is Kim Tyler, one five nine two one Southwest Fourteenth Street, Pembroke Pines, Florida, three three zero two seven. Uh, I have called in before showing support, uh, but I do have a question. Will there be more meetings about this topic? It seems like a very long process. I thought it was already done, just like the speaker before me said. Uh, I might sound a little selfish, but I really hope that this moves quickly for my new family's sake. Uh, for the record, I do still support. Good luck. Uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. This will be, uh, city clerk, you, I mean, city attorney, you'll correct me if I'm wrong. This will be the final reading for its passage or not passage.
For the record, Mayor, may respond, Mayor and Commissioner, the answer is yes. This is a site-specific site plan. It is the end of the line, so to speak, legally, under the city code. If approved this evening, the matter will be able to proceed further, uh, with an order of the commission, if it's approved favorably, uh, authorizing the, uh, the activity to, to, to continue. That's correct, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, if there's no further discussion, two speakers?
I do have, I'm sorry, this is Commissioner Goode.
Commissioner Goode, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I, I do have a question. I know it's, uh, a little, uh, out of the ordinary. This is called the Pines Village Market and, uh, for me, i- it sort of may confuse, you know, one of our more important historic sections of Pembroke Pines, called Pines Village. And so I'm just curious if, uh, any conversation was had with that community in terms of, uh, using this, uh, this particular title. I, I don't know that I would want it to be confused. You know, unless it's Pines Village Market, could it be called Pines Market Village? In the event that the Pines Village is, which represents a historic community, are, um, egregious to the name? Is that possible?
Mr. Mealy?
Um, the, uh, the Pines Village Market name is just a placeholder on this paper. I assure you that when we open the development, that's not what it's going to be called. It seems these days that my clients are naming all their developments after cities in Italy or something like that. So it, it won't be Pines Village Market.
All right, well, that's, um, thank you, uh, Mr. Mealy and to your applicant or to your client. That would be a, a very important issue for me. Thank you.
Okay, city clerk?
Mayor?
Who is that?
It's Cyple.
Commissioner Cyple, you had something else?
I did, I did, Mayor, only just that I saw that, uh, a few people were saying that they were on the chat. They had their hand raised and they weren't seen, or, you know, weren't recognized. And I also had a question, um, uh, if there were any, uh, emails or anything sent in that need to be read into the record as, as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Cyple. We have satisfied all of the callers and we're ready to move on.
We have, we have one person that put in the chat just, uh, a couple of minutes ago that she tried to raise her hand and could not, so-
Okay, go ahead. Let's recognize her.
Thank you.
And we'll proceed.
Trish, please, uh, state your name, address, and you have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon or good evening, I'm sorry. Um, Trish Mosellas, one six one three Southwest 158 Terrace, Pembroke Pines, Florida, three three zero two seven. And I know you guys are ready to, you know, have your comments and make your statements. I just once again want to be heard that I am in favor of this. I think it's going to be a great addition. I think it will, you know, make a compliment to the surrounding area. You know, they're decently priced. I am very much looking forward to being able to purchase there as I rent, um, in that area right now over in Grand Palms. So, you know, for my two cents, I hope it goes through. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. All right, was that the last speaker, Mr. Benioff?
Thank you, Mayor. As it stands right now, I don't have any more comments or people that have raised their hand. Uh, let me check one more time. Uh, no, nothing as of right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, this is Mike Stam. Can I interrupt you for a moment, sir? Mike Stam?
Go ahead.
Uh, Mayor, we did receive some email correspondence, as Commissioner Cyple had asked about. I will state for the record that some of this correspondence seems to overlap with other projects on tonight's agenda. It was more general in nature. However, a couple of the emails specifically talked about Pines and Dyke, so I want to make sure those get read onto the record for this item. Uh, we have an email from Mr. and Mrs. Lopez. Pembroke Pines is different. We are a community of mainly single-family homes, a community of local businesses and relevant classy retail establishments. This process has been rushed through its final analysis with no insight as to the consequences on traffic and congestion. How many grocery stores, fast food chain, restaurants and townhomes do we need? Many of these failing national chains come and go at the expense of the small business proprietors that end up being cannibalized by overdevelopment. No one wins in the end and we, the residents, end up having bad traffic in closed storefronts. We simply can't let the east side commissioners decide what the west side. There is another email, um, from Ms. Laura Franzic. I believe this email was shared with the commission as well as public comments. Her, her email corresponds with townhome developments, um, collectively. So I want to make sure it gets heard on this quasi-item, so that we don't miss anything. Dear Mayor and Commissioners, once again, the city is entertaining approvals of yet more townhome development proposals on parcels of land that will have a large negative impact on the surrounding environment and communities. The neighbors and residents in directly impacted communities, as well as West Pines, are against this continued development and are strongly ask that you stop these approvals. Even though these emails and comments seem to fall in seemingly deaf and somewhat disinterested ears, our city, our elected city officials, it's important that each of you know our communities are tired of the ongoing rubber stamp approvals of these types of requests. We respect the right of landowners to make a profit, but we also expect our elected officials to have a structure and vision for the few remaining open spaces left in West Pines that will guide how the remaining privately owned parcels are addressed. Mr. Stam, the city's director of planning and economic development, also offers few tangible, long-term development plans outside of the ways that appear skewed on behalf of developers and their representatives. Considering that Mr. Stam doesn't live in our city and yet continually advocates on development proposals that are detrimental to our residents, seems to appoint- seems to point to a lack of his own personal concern for us residents. Having a strategic vision for the future of our city should include more than a collection of traffic studies, bylaws, and rationalizations for the ongoing developer-led requests. These few remaining parcels are disappearing under pavement at an alarming rate with seemingly no end in sight. If we do not have a clearly defined vision for our city, we will continue to have one created for us by developers that will result in more and more townhouses, unchecked growth on every remaining green space. This will completely erode the beauty, green space, and community sense of our city. What does our city stand for, and how is that vision getting supported? Right now, commissioners from the east are voting favorably on developments that will have no direct impact on their districts, but hugely negative across our city. Is that a balanced and sensible approach to city management? Thank you for your consideration. Please read this on the February 17th meeting. Most importantly, please understand that your constituents are against these proposals. Encourage you to vote against them. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, City Clerk, call a vote, please.
Commissioner Cyple?
No.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
No.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
I was a yes, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Okay.
Mayor, I have a question.
Hold on a second. I've not finished my analysis. Hold on. The motion has been passed, and Vice Mayor, on what subject do you want to speak?
I want to, the city manager, now that this item has passed, the city is going to close on the remaining parcel, correct?
City Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. That is correct.
And how much are, how much are the Pembroke Pines taxpayers going to receive as a result of this closing?
It's a, it's money that goes back into the general fund.
I understand that, sir. How much, the contract was originally for 23 million, was it not?
I believe it was around 21, 22. I don't recall the balance of this. They did, in fact, pay us for the commercial parcel. The outstanding due on this parcel, Michael, I think you have that number from the review.
Mike Stam, Planning and Economic Development Director. I want to say it's 12.7. If you give me just one moment, I'll confirm.
Okay, so the city taxpayers have received, will be receiving nearly $13 million in revenue as a result of this vote. Is that correct?
I'm hesitant when you say the city taxpayers, Commissioner. The city will receive it.
Let me, Mr. Dodge, the item's over. So, we don't need to define it and go into it. The item's over. Let's go on to ordinance's resolutions, please.
Well, Mayor, the question about.
Question is irrelevant, Vice Mayor. City Attorney, am I correct? The item's passed?
The answer is that the question is an allied question to the subject before the commission. If there's an answer that can be offered, it should be offered, and then move on to item number 15.
While he off, you asked the question, you got an answer. We're moving on, right? Vice Mayor?
Yes, we have 12.7 million. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Ordinance is a resolution, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission, with your permission. Item number 15, take a deep breath. It's item number 2019-18. It's a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number 201918 on second and final reading. It is proposed ordinance 201918, which is an ordinance of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, adopting the proposed regular-scale land use plan amendment, amending the city's land use on an approximate 558-acre parcel of property, generally located on the southeast corner of Southwest 172nd Avenue and Pines Boulevard. It is more particularly described in Exhibit A, attached here too and incorporated herein, from 509 acres of the irregular residential, that's 2.243 development units per acre, plus 49 acres of commercial within a dashed line, to 527.6 acres of irregular residential 2.621 dwelling units per acre, plus 30.6 acres of the commercial within a dashed line for the purpose of developing a maximum of 211 townhome units. Recommending an amendment to the Broward County Land Use Designation on the aforementioned property, providing for transmittal of certified copies of this ordinance and proposed land use plan amendment to the Broward County Planning Council, the Department of Economic Opportunity, and any other interested governmental entities. Requesting the county administrator to amend the Broward County Land Use Map, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, and finally, providing for an effective date. It is a second and final hearing. It's a public hearing, Mayor and Commission, as provided for by law, number 1520-19-18. Thank you very much, Mayor and Commission.
Thank you, City Attorney. Well done. Is there a motion for item 15?
I'll move, Mayor Schwartz.
Moved by Vice Mayor Schwartz. Is there a second? There a second to item 15? I'll second the motion. Discussion, item 15.
Yes, Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
I have a, I have some questions for Mr. Millie on this item.
All right. Mr. Millie? Yes, sir.
Mr. Millie, good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Millie, I have some concerns about, let me strike that. The city has concerns about a potential bus depot or similar community item if this process, if this transaction does not go through because the property is currently owned by the school board. And if the school board were to sell it to the county as a result of the voter referendum this past November, I'm going to ask if your applicant would be willing to place a covenant on the property in the form of a pro forma declaration of covenant and conditions subject to the, you know, closing. I guess what I'm asking for is, would your client be willing to put a covenant that would not allow a community-type function like a bus depot on this property?
Yes, we would. What we, as you mentioned, we would do that as part of our closing. We could prepare the restrictive covenant in advance for review by the city attorney and the city as a whole, the city commission. But yes, we would absolutely do that. We have no desire to build anything on this property other than townhomes.
I'd like to offer an amendment to this item and to adopt the LUA on second and final reading with the on-the-record commitment of legal camp and the corresponding offering to pre-submit a pro forma declaration of covenants and conditions affecting the subject, property as described during this, given the evidence and testimony on the record.
Okay, is there a second to the amendment?
Second, Commissioner Good.
Second, Commissioner Good. Discussion on the amendment. Somebody's mic is live and it's really, got a bad noise coming at. All right, that's good. That, that hit. All right. So, no further discussion on the amendment. City Clerk, on the amendment.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Cyple?
No.
Commissioner Castillo?
No.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes. All right. Now, we are on the motion as amended.
Mr. Mayor?
Hold on. Commissioner Good?
I yield. I'll wait.
Commissioner Castillo, you had a question?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. I, I didn't want to have to restate it, but perhaps there's, you know, it's understandable with everything going on in the world that we might forget things that were said. However, since 2019, since before 2019, there's been a project important to the residents of West Pembroke Pines, the Pembroke Road completion out to US 27. In an email that I recently got from City Manager Dodge, written by City Engineer Kennedy, he's told me that at best, it will be 2027 before that project can happen. The residents of Western Pembroke Pines feel that that is too long to wait for projects that should be done before townhomes are completed, not after. And it is for that reason. It has nothing to do with the developer, has nothing to do with, with smart growth. It has to do with the fact that the city is not sufficiently advancing these projects. Once upon a time, the city was prepared to pay for this. And then we went to the state to ask for money. It was granted there, and then it was vetoed, and then came the penny tax. And now we're talking about 2027, when all we needed to do is pay three quarters of, of a mile and provide people with traffic relief. Miramar is the only city that can't go west out of their jurisdiction. They have to come north in order to go west, to either go north or south on US 27. So, we're not only burdened with our many, many cars, we're also burdened with the City of Pembroke Pines' many, many cars. And that is a phenomenon that is not experienced by people who live east of, of I-75. And it's for this reason, simply because the game has changed in terms of the, the conditions under which these townhomes were proposed, that, that the residents of, of Western Pembroke Pines join me in, in voting against it. I am strongly encouraging the City of Pembroke Pines to reopen discussion with the county to complete that project and to begin putting other projects on a much more aggressive schedule. The residents of Pembroke, of, of Western Pembroke Pines have suffered way too much with, with, with traffic. Now that we're in the age of vaccination, with any luck, we will start going back to work. We, we are seeing more and more traffic every day from what we have experienced during the stay-at-home orders of, of, of past months. It's time to get back to work and get these projects done. Otherwise, I just don't feel that we can live up to our smart growth commitments to build one. So, thank you very much. Thank you. Okay. City Clerk, call a vote.
Mr. Mayor, I still have something.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Good, yes. And, and I do appreciate the statement that Commissioner Castillo just made. I think we should actually take that up at some future time in regards to accelerating that project. There, there probably are options, and, and I think with your help, Mayor, that I think we can make that happen and still be, have full cost recovery for that. But I do have some quick questions on this item here. So, the first question I wanted to ask was, is this, this, this property, is it, is it currently undeveloped or developed?
Mr. Mayor, this is Dennis, this is Dennis Millie. I have some slides I could show that I think would answer the commissioner's question. Would you like me to do that? Okay. All right. I think, Mr. Stam, if he could pull up the presentation, we can show you that. Okay. Mr. Stam, if you could go to the next slide, please. Okay, go to the next one, please. I want to get right to the one to answer the commissioner's question. Next one, please. Okay. So, this is what the site looks like today. You see all those little, what looks like little buildings on the site. Those are the portables that the school board put there years ago for, I think it was a ninth-grade center or something like that at one point. Down in the lower right-hand corner, what looks like a lot of trees is primarily a lot of exotic trees, but the extreme southeastern end of that is a preserve area. You notice the area outlined in yellow that we've shown is not included. The reason I showed that is when we were at the Planning and Zoning Board meeting, there was a question from a neighbor that they were, thought we were going to try to access the street that's labeled here, 168th Avenue. We are not doing that. In fact, that area labeled in yellow, the school board thought they owned it and that they were going to sell it to us. And we found out that they didn't own it, and they can't sell it to us. And we weren't going to use it for anything anyway, because we didn't want to access the road. But I want to show you that's not there. The property is not vacant. It has a bunch of school portables on it and the paving associated with those portables. Thank you, Mr. Millie.
Thank you, Mr. Millie. So, so this is being, this is in a, in a PUD. So, it, there's only residential and commercial allowed in this PUD. Is that correct? No industrial?
That's correct.
Okay. And if it's not residential, what's the alternative in terms of commercial? What would be allowed at this location in commercial?
So, it would allow the, pretty much the full use of, the full scope of commercial zoning, shopping centers, office buildings, restaurants, fast food, you know, all kinds of different commercial uses. And so, we've analyzed that. We've shown that the traffic is substantially reduced by what we're doing. This amendment was unanimously recommended for approval by the Broward County Planning Council, by the County Commission. There were no negative comments from any of the review agencies at the state or regional level or any other level. We do have a report from the school board that there's adequate capacity to, how, to school, educate the students that would come out of here. So, that's what we have.
Okay. So, and, and just recognizing that the type of commercial that could probably be accepted there is very, it's a challenge, considering the current environment we are in. People beginning to live, work from home, office space is less needed, as well as some of these retail stores and things are no longer attractive because we have different methods of accessing goods. So, thank you for that. It's, it's a good consideration for me. The, can, can we speak about affordable housing for a moment? Because is, is, there was a reference that it's, this change of affordable housing. We had to change the affordable housing analysis to be in compliance with the city's, with the Broward County Land Use Plan. Can, can that be explained a little bit about affordable housing and how this is impacting affordable housing?
Mr. Millie?
In a positive or negative way?
So, the, we did an affordable housing study that showed that we met the requirements of the county's affordable housing policy. And the county staff said that we did, and the county commission approved it, acknowledging that we did. Now, what is happening at the county level right now, among other things, but in terms of affordable housing studies, is in the future, you will have to use the model that was prepared by Florida International University instead of the model that was prepared by the Meridian Group. Until very recently, the county required you to use the Meridian Group model, which we did for this project. But if an amendment was to come up next year, if, not, not this one, but some new amendment next year, it would have to use the Florida International University model. But we were able to demonstrate that Pembroke Pines has an adequate supply of affordable housing in most of the categories. And then there's always been a recognition at the county that the City of Pembroke Pines has one of the strongest affordable housing programs of any city in Broward County. And so, they always mention that when an amendment comes up from the City of Pembroke Pines.
Thank you. I have one other question as well regarding park impacts and things. So, what is, what is, you know, this looks like it could be a park, right? So, what is, how do the parks, are we deficient in parks and things? Could this be used in that capacity?
Mr. Mayor, may I, may I continue to respond? Please, Mr. Millie. So, you, the City of Pembroke Pines has a program that when you come in with a new development, whether it's residential or non-residential, there's an analysis made whether there's a, any municipal facility required that would require a dedication of land, a park, or even some other, you know, police, fire, or other municipal purpose. Most of the time what we're seeing these days is that there is not a need for a dedication of land because there are sufficient parks. In fact, I think we have one right next to the property here. I'm looking at those baseball diamonds. But what we do have to do is we have to pay. But what we do have to do is we have to pay what's called a municipal land dedication fee. And so it's computed based on the value of the property and a certain percentage that must be paid to the city. Now, we are doing a plat for this project, and generally, the municipal land dedication fee is on the agenda at the same time as the plat.
So maybe to...
I'm sorry, we've already, and we've already prepared a draft of that agreement, and we're working with the city staff to have it finalized.
Okay. And maybe this is for city staff to, if you're paying a fee, I would assume that means that we have a surplus of parkland. Is there an ability to tell us, to, for me to know whether we're, you know, do we have excess parks by a lot or a little? Or are we deficient in park space?
Mr. Dodge?
Mayor, this is Mike Stam. Can I answer that question for you, sir?
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead, Mike.
Commissioner Good, that's a really good question. Our comp plan talks about parks on a ratio per resident basis. You know, we obviously like to look at the city as one city. What gets calculated as a park is a function of the Broward County Planning Council, the county, and the state. When you look at those types of spaces, we meet our standards right now, and that's part of the comparative analysis that gets reviewed. It's not to say that we can't always build more parks, but at this moment in time, it's not a requirement based on the land use change. As Dennis Mealy mentioned, during the plating item, which, depending on how this item moves, there will be a municipal dedication for municipal purposes where funds will be allocated to the city for municipal purposes, whether that could be for park improvements or other uses that the commission decides. I hope that answers your question adequately, sir.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Commissioner, for your question.
Mr. Dodge? Mr. Dodge?
Yes, Mayor.
The SRTAX, when it was passed and with shovel-ready projects, when you put that list to the county about what Pembroke Pines needed infrastructure, there was some talk about us doing it and getting reimbursed back from the SRTAX. Do you remember that conversation?
We did, in fact, have a conversation with the county. However, the county has set their process up regarding how they're doing the distribution and the review of SRTAX money. I'm sorry, I'm talking about the... Go ahead.
Go ahead, that's all right. I just wanted to make the point, and plus, the administration now is talking about infrastructure money going into a new bill, new COVID bill. So hopefully, we get some money from that. And the MPO is trying to, you know, step up with earlier dates, and it's all up to the state because that's where it comes from. So we'll do our best. Okay, Commissioner Castillo, did I hear you have one more comment, and we'll move on?
Yes, yes, I do. Mr. Mr. Stam, could you bring up the the map again where it says this section is not That's the one, not included. Who owns that land?
Mr. Mayor, I think I can help with this if you'd like.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Castillo, my understanding is that the land is still owned by the K. Hovmanian Company, who was the developer who built some of the homes next to it. The school board originally thought that it had been dedicated to them. When we did the title review, we discovered that it was not their property, and therefore we could not buy it from them. I spoke to, at the time, Pembroke Shores had a special counsel, a gentleman named Chuck Edgar from Palm Beach County. And I know that Chuck had reached out to the school board's attorney, Joe Bilaco Jr. And then I believe he ended up talking to somebody at K. Hovmanian. I don't know what happened after that. What I had heard was that K. Hovmanian and the HOA were talking about perhaps K. Hovmanian deeding it over to the HOA, but I don't know if that ever happened.
Mr. Dodge, is this, is this, is this the property that we had been talking to the Pembroke Shores homeowners association about?
Yeah, yes, it is for for their use, a portion of it. But again, once again, it was assumed it was owned by the school board at that time, and through their acquisition, it would have become available. And then we would have spoken to the purchaser about trying to make that happen.
And Commissioner, I will tell you that when we first started and we thought that this was going to be part of our purchase, staff advised us of those discussions, and we were willing to just give it to the association.
I remember that.
But then we found out that whoever couldn't buy it, that ended that, you know?
I remember it, I remember exactly that.
Can everybody just mute their phones because we're interrupting their speakers, please? It's very difficult to hear. Mr. Mealy, please continue.
I was unfinished, Mr. Mayor. I'm done.
All right. All right, any further discussion?
Can I finish?
I thought you were. Go ahead, Mr. Castillo.
No, I'll tell you when I'm finished. Thanks. So so the, so the, so the, the property in question was the property, Charlie, that we were talking about with the HOA for their clubhouse?
That is correct.
However, however, nothing that we're doing today will affect this particular, let's call it a plot of land.
That's correct.
Okay, because we just had, we just had an amended motion to, and now I guess the question has to, has to go to Sam Goran. We just had an amended motion that no community uses would be allowed there. This HOA has been patiently trying to negotiate with the city for this land in some way for their clubhouse. Am I correct? Is it legally correct to assume that nothing we do here will affect the area shaded in yellow?
Mayor, respond, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Thank you. I believe the Commissioner, I know the Commissioner Castillo is accurate, but I would like to make sure that the record reflects that same commitment in the context of what the motion was intended to do as amended through Mr. Mealy as well. If he could respond on the record, that would be very useful, Commissioner.
Mr. Mayor, so the restrictive covenant will only cover the land that we are buying, which is only the land outlined in red. The land in yellow is not something we're buying, so it wouldn't be affected by the restrictive covenant.
And that, and that's good, because it sort of underscores the, the, I don't know, the danger that we get into when we make motions and don't understand all of the pieces that are involved. But I appreciate, I appreciate that comment. And Mayor, I'm now finished.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Castillo. Call a roll, please. Oh, Mr. Benioff?
Mayor.
Mr. Benioff? Mr. Benioff? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Just really quick, I know that Mike Stam has some public comments that were sent.
Mr. Stam?
Point of order.
Who is that?
Wards.
Well, you have to say it, Vice Mayor.
I apologize, Mayor. You have a hard job to do. I tried to...
Apologize. Your apologies. All right, let's, we're going to move on to items, so go ahead, please. Make a break.
Yes. City Attorney.
Sir.
My motion about this restrictive covenant was not off the cuff this evening, was it, sir?
I don't believe so.
It included significant research and discussion with your office prior to tonight's meeting.
Mayor, respond, Mayor.
Please.
Yes, the answer is yes, and the motion had some serious, has serious consequences.
Would the District Four Commissioner retract, I believe is a inappropriate comment regarding the motion being unprepared and off the cuff and uninformed? Is the District Four Commissioner willing to do that?
If you're announcing, you don't have to put the emails in.
Yeah, yeah. But...
Go ahead, Mr. City Attorney.
I'm asking the District Four Commissioner if he's looking to retract his comments regarding how this motion came about.
All right, here's what we're going to do. I'm going to make, I'm going to make a decision on it. We're going to move on. And we're ready to go. And Mr. Benioff, can you go ahead and...
Thank you, Mayor. Just really quick, just to put it on record, nobody's raised their hand. Any of the publics that have called in have not raised their hand. And if they choose to do so, they can do so by presence star three. But I believe if there's nobody that has raised their hand, which at this point, nobody's raised their hand, Mike Stam can proceed with reading or saying the comments, the public comments that were sent via email.
Mr. Stam?
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Stam?
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me, sir?
We can hear you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, sir. For the record, before I read these comments, and some of these comments also pertain to items future in the agenda, which is the rezoning items that pertain to this project. So I'm stating those for both records, and Mr. City Attorney, they could be attached to those items as well, correct?
That is correct, sir.
Thank you for the guidance, sir. I have an email from Miss Susan Snyder, 730 Southwest 191st Avenue. Please read at the February 17 meeting. I'm writing, I'm read, I'm, excuse me, I'm writing regarding the new construction of townhomes proposed for Pines and 172. I have been watching and concerned for the better part of a year as this project has moved along in spite of community concerns. The builder listens and has slick answers and has fixes to make the neighboring communities accept change next door. U.S. Town Guardians listen and approve the project with small changes requested, even when the project may not be in your district. In the end, this deal was struck years ago, and while small changes were made, stopping it has been and is out of reach. The land was already razed and paved, but the ink was also signed. For the population of Pembroke Pines, our quality of life will be impacted by more traffic on the roads and more humans taxing our ecological system. For the ecological, for the ecology itself, we are on the brink of destroying our trust, our trust, our responsibility to care as much as saving the ecosystem as we do about those who have political power and those who have sufficient resources to buy and access favor. This, then, is a request that going forward, before entertaining into agreements, that more about dollars about protecting our natural resources. You will think more than twice. Think deeply about the longer arc of impact and act to protect the precious land we still have in Pembroke Pines. Look to the empty spaces already built and encourage responsible repurposing. Don't make deals because the builders, their representatives, their legal counsel, or their realtors are your friends. Leave the existing unbuilt land alone. Thank you for listening. Pembroke Pines Commissioners, please vote no on the proposed townhouse in West Pines. More homes and more traffic is ruining our city. Our green space is slowly being depleted. The city has lost sight of what our city was and not is thinking about what our city has become. I'm seriously consider moving to another city that thinks more about green spaces, destroying homes for wildlife, a city that cares about traffic and pollution. We are putting another publics on Pines Boulevard. Why? The rent prices for small business in Pines is becoming exorbitant. Store after store is closing. I hope the city will consider that they are already getting enough tax money, and we can hardly handle the traffic. We have to stop building. Pines Charter schools are slowly becoming more and more crowded and do not have open, are not even open for in-person learning. The quality of education at Pines Charter used to be, used to boast, is no longer worth mentioning. The city should focus on current residents, current traffic, and getting our children back to being educated. Ms. Lisa Valdez. I just have an email from Ms. Diaz, no to 172 Town Homes. No more townhomes. Mayor Orde stated that the Pembroke Pines is awarded as a city of trees. The remaining trees are being taken over by greedy developers with development of townhomes. In addition, many of these developers don't even live in the city. No townhomes on Pines and 172. We say no to proposed townhomes on Pines and 172 and additional traffic noise and crime. Francisco and Francisco Gondorillas and Dana Lebries, 818-550-SOUTHWESTFOURSTREET. I'm sending my concern for the lack of planning and zoning on new townhouse communities in West Pines. We already overcrowded. Traffic is a nightmare, as most of us moved out here to get away from traffic, and we're stuck in it again. There are more people also coming, turning out streets who visit, who are creating a nightmare for our homeowners. Say no to new townhomes. Andrew Rio, Silver Lakes. I am completely against development of the proposed townhomes on Pines and 172. My family and I moved west to Pembroke Pines three years ago. We fell in love with the area, the way it was, family, homes, great schools, shopping, lots of nature. We can't keep destroying nature to add more shops, homes, and townhomes. If this continues, happens in West Pines, we'll be the next Hialeah, wall-to-wall homes and shops driven out by greed. I've been a resident for 19 years. I recall when building condos west of I-75 was not even thought of. Now we are filled with them, adding more issues to the already busy roads. Pines has become the new Kendall. My family and I oppose the construction of additional townhomes or condos, including the projected ones on 172, as well as the ones already being built. It's a shame to see how much crime has increased in our city since I moved here. Hello, I live in Chapel Trail. Recently, I came to my attention about townhomes building off of Pines and 172. I vote no. Do not overbuild our West Lines area, our West Pines area, excuse me. It's crowded as it is. We moved our family out west so we can enjoy the suburbs and escape the hectic geese Pines. Hello, Mayor and Commissioners, I am a resident of Pembroke Shores for the last 10 years, and I wanted to state for the record that I am opposed to the development of plans identified as Merrick Square and 172 and Pines, with the development taking place on dykes and pines of townhomes. And now, okay, we are surrounded by low-cost, high-density housing. The traffic is already challenging on Pines, and we have no plans for relief. Please request the developer to reconsider low-density housing, perhaps luxury homes that will not negatively impact the Pembroke Shores property values and quality of life. This last email, bear with me, Mayor, is with heavy heart that I wrote to you today. It seems as though you, our elected officials, have ignored the wishes of those who have elected you to serve our best interests. It's obvious that most of you do not care about the excessive overdevelopment of our western part of our city. Your obvious neglect of our thoughts is disturbing, to say the least. The property at Pines and Dykes, as well as the property at 172, should be reverted back to us, the taxpayers, when they decided that they no longer needed the facility. It should not have been developed with a shopping center or more homes. The conflict of interest that did not serve the residents, the taxpaying backbone of Pembroke Pines, now you are playing with this, with us in terms of how many homes will be built in the area without proper traffic impacts or studies. You care not what we, the most impacted residents, feel about this added burden and the safety of our homes and our lives. That brings me to 172 and Pines, another parcel that will impact our life. As a resident of Pembroke Shores, this property development will completely bookend of additional safety concerns. Lower-cost housing has impacted crime in our community. The traffic increases and safety concerns are even more troublesome. The Broward School Board should have reverted the taxpayer-funded property back to those provided funding to purchase it in the first place. It should have been the people's property, as with the former post office. But instead, we battle the mayor and the commissioners that will not be impacted by any of these developments. Your positive position on these parcels begins to wonder what skin you have in the game. The resident taxpayers' position on these parcels begins to, sorry, excuse me, has plenty of, ignore your wishes, I'm sorry, writing is tough sometimes. You ignore our pleas, you ignore the overall impact. This is more than just increased tax base for the city covers. It's irresponsible. It reeks of backhanded, back alley deals with people of influence rather than the representation of citizens who put you in office. Please do the right thing for once. Limit the impact to our neighborhood. We hold you all responsible for negative impacts to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Please do as Mayor Flanagan would have done. Make the developers vastly improve the infrastructure, including additional travel lanes and things that do not greatly impact the free movement of traffic, as most of your proposals have negatively impacted. Your decision needs to be waited. Yours respectfully, Mark Maradia. Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Stam, are we, like, five or six years, our property values have increased 4.5% or higher?
Mayor, it's my understanding that those numbers have been a little bit higher than that. I thought the numbers were closer to 7%.
7% for property values.
Yeah, Mayor, they have for a number of years now. They've been up 7% or higher.
So when somebody tries to insult us as elected officials, but the property values continue to increase, I think we're doing the right thing. All right, that's the last comment I have. Call a roll, please, City Clerk.
Mayor, this is Cyple.
We're moving on. Go ahead, City Clerk.
I just had a question for Mr. Stam about names.
All right, final question, and we're going to move on. Go ahead, Commissioner Cyple.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to ask, Mr. Stam, thank you for reading those, those emails or letters into the, into the record, but a number of them you did not give a name on. Did they not have names? Some, you did state a name, and some you did not.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Cyple, some of them don't put their name in the, in the email itself. They just say no. I apologize, I didn't read their email addresses.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's fine, that's fine. Is there some way we can get a copy of those? I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Orde, if I may, it's your city attorney. If I may, quickly, Mr. Mealy, you did not, if I may, Mr. Mayor, you did not, Mr. Mealy, move into the record, the PowerPoint which you offered some time ago. Would you please do that so the record can be complete? the record can be complete?
Yes, if we could have the PowerPoint that we show be in the record for this item, as well as, what would that be, 17 and 18 for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mealy. So those will be marked by the clerk as being part of your presentation and part of the evidence and testimony otherwise provided in this, in the context this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Schwartz. Mayor Ordis?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Cyple?
No.
Commissioner Castillo?
No.
The record, Mayor, the item passes. Permanent record number for the city's public records is number 1959, 1959. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, City Attorney. Let's go into item 16, first reading.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. First reading on item 2021-01 is a motion to pass proposed ordinance number 2021-02. It's an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, pertaining to the subject of zoning and land development, repealing in its entirety Chapters 37, 116, 153, 155, and 159 of the City of Pembroke Pines Code of Ordinances, adopting new land development code for the City of Pembroke Pines, adopting a zoning map for the City of Pembroke Pines, adopting physical and digital versions of the land development code and map, providing for the repeal and amendments of all other code provisions and ordinances inconsistent with this ordinance, providing for transition from existing land development code, providing for conflict, providing for stability, providing for codification, and finally, providing effective date, number
Motion for item 16.
Castillo moves the item.
Castillo, Commissioner Castillo moves. Is there a second?
Begging, Schwartz.
Commissioner, Vice Mayor Schwartz, seconds the motion. Let me just say very quickly, Mr. Sam, you did a heck of a job on this. You and all of your people in the Planning and Zoning Department with our ordinances, I didn't read that whole book, but I read a lot of it. So you should be commended. That's why our city is in such a, such a great city, and I want to commend you on that. Okay, no further remarks? Please call a roll, Senator.
Mr. Mayor, I do have remarks. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Good, you gotta talk.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You jumped in first. I, I too want to say that this is a really good product, you know, easy to read, much different than many of the things that we're used to. And, you know, going through it, you know, I have read a lot of it, and I do have probably some more questions before we go to second reading. But there is one thing in particular that I'm very concerned about, and I was hoping to maybe, you know, have my colleagues, you know, weigh in some and have some consideration prior to second reading. And it deals with the, with the airport, the Perry Airport. I, I don't believe that it's, it's a prudent for us to have any issue on that property go to anyone other than us. I really have great respect for the planning and zoning folks. You know, they do a wonderful job. You know, sometimes, some of the stuff they see over and over again, they gain experience and they really apply that knowledge and is very, very helpful. But, but we're talking about a property that's not even a Pembroke Pines property. It's a Broward County property, first and foremost. Secondly, it's a business like no other business in this city. It's very rare in any city. There are a number of activities that take place at the Perry Airport that have a very large impact on this city in many different ways. And I don't think that any of those items should go to anyone other than this commission. I think we all should be, we should hear it as opposed to it being presented to anyone else, so that we can take responsibility and have a better interaction with Broward County on a business operation on property that's within, that's circled by this city, that would be, that we can, we can make certain that the best things that could happen there are happening, as we, you know, are constantly in communication with our residents in regards to this particular, to the airport. So I would like to see this land development code somehow capture the fact, I don't know if you want to call it a carve-out, I don't know how it could be done, you know, I defer to staff, but any, any issue that is brought, you know, before the city from the Broward County Airport for Perry Airport comes directly to the commission.
City Attorney, what do you say then?
Mayor and Commissioner, certainly it's worth a, to respond to Commissioner Good. You use the word carve-out. Certainly, that matter can be looked at between first and second reading. No question about the fact that legally, the North Perry Airport has some very unique legal attributes to it that are, that are different than other parts of the city. And to the extent that we can study that along with Mr. Sam and City Administration, we're happy to do that between first and second reading to assure you that either it can or cannot be done, but theoretically, it could be done.
Okay, very good. All right. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo.
I, I was a little confused by my colleague, Mr. Good and Commissioner Good, and I wasn't quite sure what he meant. I, I know he didn't mean that the Planning and Zoning Board, which is residents, shouldn't be involved in, in, in understanding or sharing advice. I wasn't quite sure specifically what he was saying should be different with respect to the airport. Can, can, can I ask the commissioner to re-explain, maybe even with an example of what, of what exactly he's asking for?
Commissioner Good?
So I, I am, as I've stated, I, I believe that the Planning and Zoning Board have great value to many aspects within our city. But again, I want to reiterate that this is a unique, and it's not even a city asset, it's a unique, however, asset within the City of Pembroke Pines. There are a lot of very important technical issues that are associated with this particular airport. There's, you know, even a need for us as elected officials to even have better communication with the elected officials in Broward County as they decide what the future is going to be for that particular location. You know, we just recently went through some issues where there were huge impacts to this city in terms of our public safety that did not even get addressed, you know, during the process, that had it come before us, we would have been a little bit more comprehensive in understanding some of the things outside of just the planning and zoning purview, that we could have used that expertise to help get a better development or better process provided to us by the Broward County Airport.
Right. Commissioner Castillo? All right.
I, I guess, I guess some things just need to mature with time. I'm, I'm very eager to learn, learn more about what, about what that, that issue is, and I'll be, I'll be listening, I'll be listening patiently to try and understand it better. And I thank the Commissioner for his comment.
Mayor Schwartz?
Yep. Vice Mayor?
City Attorney?
Yes, sir.
It's my opinion that the function of the Planning and Zoning Board is architectural review, when, with respect to its limitations at, at North Perry, at Broward County's property, basically corner to corner, the entire outside and inside of the fence, it's architectural review only, correct?
I would have Mr. Sam confirm that, but there are limitations on how far the city's rules, regulations, and policies extend to the county-owned property. So, Mr. Sam, they need to give you the insight as to what actually is implemented by his office in the context of applications for retail or commercial establishments, or hangers for that matter.
Right, and City Attorney, you may have even prepared the documents, but years ago, back in the 70s perhaps, when, when the City of Pembroke Pines and Broward County needed to get some things done, there were interlocal agreements about the role of Broward County Aviation Department, the role of the City of Pembroke Pines, and the role of the Broward County Commission with respect to public use facilities, you know, like an airport. Is that correct?
Generally speaking, it is correct.
So that's the type of review I would want you to take a look at, with respect to any changes to the way that we've been doing things for, for decades. And, and, and by all means, if Commissioner Good has, you know, has an inquiry, I fully support that inquiry. I, I don't know, I'm not following the, some, some of the comments, Commissioner Good, with respect to safety. If you would be a little bit more specific about what you were alluding to, I can tell you that the FAA has full jurisdiction over anything safety-related. The NTSB has full jurisdiction, and that's federal. It doesn't matter if, if you like it or not, that's just the way it is. It's federal. Now, the, the airport manager is not on this meeting tonight, and I think it's a little unfair to blindside Nina, who's been this, this City of Pembroke Pines advocate for more than 20 years. So I think before any item comes back, I think we need to extend at least some professional courtesy that the item would even be, be brought forward to begin with. We have a county commissioner, Beam Fur, who, the last time I checked, is a City of Pembroke Pines County representative, who is also not on this call this evening regarding items related to his role to oversee his constituency that just so happens to be a part of ours. So I, I, I am grateful for the inquiry and to have the City Attorney look into what can change. But between first and second reading, I expect nothing less than B.CAD and Bertha Henry and the Broward County Commission be aware of what this body is looking at entertaining. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. All right, City Clerk, item 16, please.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Cyple?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Mayor Ordis?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. The item passes. It'll be heard on St. Patrick's Day on March the 17th in this chamber, either in a virtual forum or in a live personal forum, depending on what the governor does with regard to his current executive order. Next up is number 17, Mayor.
Go ahead, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. With your permission, number 17 is an ordinance of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, amending Chapter 155, referenced as the city's comprehensive zoning code of the City of Pembroke Pines, by specifically amending Section 155.027 entitled zoning map to rezone the approximate five-acre parcel of land generally located south of Pines Boulevard and east of Southwest 172nd Avenue, as more particularly described in Exhibit A, and rezoning from the current zoning of A1, references limited agricultural to PUD, that's the planned unit development concept, providing for codification, providing for conflicts, providing for stability, providing for effective date, and also providing for second and final reading tentatively on March the 17th, St. Patrick's Day. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. The item is now on the floor. Thank you, Mayor.
Need a motion for item 17, please? Need a motion for item 17, please?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Good moves the item. Is there a second? Is there a second? Can everybody hear me? Is there a second to item 17? I'll second the motion. Discussion, item 17.
I have a question, Mayor.
Discussion, item 17.
Schwartz.
Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you. It's a question from Mr. Mealy.
Mr. Mealy?
Yes, sir.
Really, the school board owns this property, correct?
Yes.
Did they put a restriction on the use of this property as a part of bid?
Yes, cannot be used as a school.
That's interesting. So the school board of Broward County sold it so that no schools could be built on it. Is that correct, Mr. Mealy?
Yeah, and I, and I am not involved in the transaction, so it might be a little bit more specific than that, but generally, we cannot put a school here.
Thank you.
All right, further discussion, item 17. Hearing none, City Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Mayor Ordis?
Yes.
Commissioner Cyple?
No.
Commissioner Castillo?
No.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
All right, City Attorney, item 17 is passed. Item 18.
Thank you, Mayor. And just remind you that the second and final reading, which will be quasi, by the way, it's a rezoning issue, will be on the 17th of March approximately. Number 18, Mayor, for the record, I'm sorry, may I read?
No, I'm just.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, amending Chapter 155, that's the city's comprehensive zoning code of the City of Pembroke Pines, by specifically amending Section 155.027, that is zoning map, amending the Pembroke Shore's PUD to add a new PUD zoning entitled PUD Zone SF5, with related development restrictions, assigning the PUD Zone SF5 zoning designation to the 23.5 acres in the PUD planned unit development, providing for codification, providing for conflicts, stability, and finally, providing for effective date. First reading on this issue. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner.
Thank you, City Attorney. Item 18, need a motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Moved by Commissioner Good. Is there a second? Item 18. Second for item 18. I'll second the motion. Discussion, item 18. Hearing none, City Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Mayor Ordis?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
No.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Cyple?
No.
Motion passed.
Thank you, City Attorney.
Thank you. The next and final reading of this item will be on March the 17th as well. Next up, Mayor and Commissioner, I believe, is number 19.
Correct.
May I read, Mayor?
Please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Motion to pass on proposed ordinance number 2021-05 is on first reading. It is an ordinance of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, pertaining to the water conservation, repealing and replacing Section 50.35 entitled Use of Water for Irrigation to provide an updated use of the water for irrigation code consistent with the requirements of the South Florida Water Management District. Repealing and replacing Section 50.36 entitled Water Shortage Management to provide an updated water shortage plan, pardon me, water shortage plan consistent with the requirements of the South Florida Water Management District, providing the intent and purpose, providing definitions, providing for the applicability of the ordinance, providing for the declaration of water shortage, of water shortage emergency, providing for variances, providing for enforcement, providing for penalties, providing for codification, conflicts, stability, and finally, providing for an effective date. Item is referenced as number 2021-05, ordinance for first reading on the floor for consideration. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner.
Castillo.
Commissioner Castillo moves item 19. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Cyple. Discussion, item 19.
Yes, Mayor.
Go ahead.
I, I just want to ask if, who, who makes the declaration of the water shortage?
I just want to ask if, who makes the declaration of the water shortage emergency?
City Manager? Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor, I do believe that's the South Florida Water Management District. Carl Kennedy's on the line. He can confirm that.
Mr. Kennedy? Mr. Kennedy?
Mr. Mayor, I do believe that's the answer. I can...
Yes.
You there, Carl?
It's Carl Kennedy, City Engineer, yes. Carl Kennedy, City Engineer, yes.
All right, City, Commissioner Good, anything else?
No, it's fine, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Castillo, go ahead.
Thank you very much. On a related question, what can the city do to work with those involved who are currently irrigating their lawns using potable water, exacerbating the shortage? You've got whole communities, as I understand it, that are using potable water to irrigate when they are within certain distance of either a body of water or we could make some sort of, or work with them in some sort of way, even put in a well if they had to, so that they wouldn't use potable water and then complain about their water bill. So, what can we do if we're serious about saving water to, you know, make it so that irrigation with, and I'm not talking about just putting on, dragging out the hose one day, you know, I'm talking about on a regular, that your irrigation system is tied to the city's potable water system. What can we do about that that would save water for the city?
Mr. City Attorney, I have a comment. We have a code violation if you're using potable water to irrigate your lawn. This city, and proud of it, is a very conservation-minded city. And we have rules and regulations that state you only water twice a week, twice a week. Different areas can start and different areas can finish, one side of the street or the other. And with that water, you can go ahead and take the water from a well or your lake or otherwise. You can't use potable water. The code enforcement, so all they have to do is go around if they see they're doing it. I pointed out when I see people doing it, tell them they can't do that. It's against our code. Mr. City Attorney, am I correct?
Generally, yes, Mayor. I can respond to two questions as they've been asked. Number one is the fact that this ordinance is something that was directed by the South Florida Water Management District under their authority by the legislature. We are working on ordinances like this throughout our governmental relationships in Broward County and elsewhere. And it applies equally to those who draw water from the ground and those who draw water from pipes. It's an equally discriminatory requirement affecting all water users. It is also something which is not any long, it's not voluntary. What they've done by the ordinance we've crafted, which is consistent with the state's review, is that in fact, it's uniform. And it's not during certain seasons, it's during a year-round regulation. And to that extent, the city will have obligations and enforcement. I'm sure that the administration can respond to those issues should they be asked, but there are penalties involved for noncompliance as well, and it's a very strict document.
I appreciate that explanation. I wouldn't want my question to be confused with any other comment, so let me rephrase it. What can we do, there are communities in our city that irrigate regularly using potable water, city water source. What can we do to work with those communities to shift them over either to well water or to lake water?
My best answer to the question might be to have the administration answer, because that's more of a professional question for our engineer than for me, if you will.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor, this is Saifal.
Hold on, City Manager? City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, I am aware of one community that was annexed into the city, and at the time that community was built, there was no restriction that they had to deal with from their prior utility provider. We have had conversations with that one homeowners association, and there are some hurdles that need to be overcome in order for that to occur. But it's certainly something we can continue to have those conversations with, and it would be a code issue once it is determined that portable water is being used for irrigation. I'm not certain if John Cooper is still on the line, but I do know when we do go out and do inspections on homes, we do look at that there is no cross-connection between portable water, city water, and any kind of well water they may have. And John, if you're on the line, perhaps maybe you can address that.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes, sir. Good evening, John Cooper, Utility Director. And Mr. Dodge is correct. We are working actively with Mr. Dodge and staff on the city's cross-connection control ordinance. And there are a number of issues that are out there in the community that have to do with this, one of which is the one identified by Commissioner Castillo. So, the answer, sir, is that we are actively working towards that. We've identified more than one. Mr. Dodge mentioned the one that he knew of. And we're working towards, you know, getting letters approved that we can send out. We're going to need community meetings, because this is not an inexpensive subject to them. It's on our radar. It's moving forward. It's not moving as fast as we would like, but...
I got the gist of it. Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the answer to the question.
All right. Commissioner Saifal?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, this is really, really kind of an interesting situation that we're in, because there are some communities, I know, out West, that when they were developed, they were developed with sprinklers and system, you know, going into those communities. They don't even, residents don't even control when the water come on. It's pre-programmed by the HOA or whoever sets it up for them. So, there are a lot of them that are already set up that way, but there are some, and I'm sure this would hold true for the entire city, that are not on a lake, not on a body of water, not on a canal, and therefore have no access to individually put a, you know, put a line out and set a, you know, set a pump in and be able to water. So, I know one of the communities in my district, this has been a problem for a long time, and they are, you know, residents do complain about the water bills, but when they're asked, yes, they do sprinkle their lawns, and that's, you know, a lot of the use that's happening there. So, what I was hoping from the discussion that I had with Mr. Dodge about this was that we would look at this as a, and I'm kind of glad to hear Mr. Cooper with his statement, but that we would look at this as a citywide, a citywide project, where in fact, if we're looking to save water, it can't just be one community here or one community there. It needs to be the entire city in order to have an effective outcome to actually be good conservators of water. So, whether that means that the city actually helps communities by getting them together and helping to put in, you know, drill some wells and do something or trying to hook up some connections with a nearby body of water, I think that that has to happen, and it's for, it's really for everybody's good, but it has to be a citywide project or else it won't have the effectiveness that we really want. And I think it's doable. It's going to take a lot of planning, a lot of thought process to it, and a lot of buy-in, but I think once folks or residents are informed and educated as to a couple of different things, you know, the environmental issue, which is huge, and then also, you know, dollars out of their pocket, where in fact, you're paying maybe for a small amount of electricity to run a pump as opposed to what they're paying for water coming, potable water coming out of their hose, and they're paying, you're paying water and sewer on that, because there's no way to determine that it's not going, you know, not directly going into the sewer as well. So, they're paying prime rate for that water, and over a period of time, that could be considerable amounts of money. So, I think this is, you know, the discussion tonight is good, and I do hope that, as Mr. Cooper said, it's not going as fast as it should be, but I don't know why we can't put a jumpstart on this, because water is expensive. An environment, we only have one. We need to protect it. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, Vice Mayor Schwartz likes to weigh in.
Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Dodge, the community that was annexed in, what's the name of that community?
That's Stone Ridge.
And the Stone Ridge pays sewer rates for their irrigation system?
Yes, they do.
And there's no way to determine what's going through the kitchen sink or what's going on to the lawn, correct?
There is not.
Okay. I'm sure Mr. Cooper, Mr. Kennedy know that most wells are dropped at 200 feet. I'm sure they also know that sprinkler pumps are run on 220 electrical power, not 110, whereas the electric that's currently being used is on a low-voltage system for municipal irrigation systems. So, it would be one thing to explore the cost of installation, but then you have the longevity cost for that individual homeowner and their electric bill going up. So, I would be interested to see what the water use in Stone Ridge is compared to other cities that actually allow irrigation. Sometimes Pembroke Pines thinks that we're like the only city in South Florida, but we are, we are a community of many cities that continue to use municipal irrigation actually on purpose, for the purposes of revenue. So, I would be interested to see what we come up with, but as far as asking a homeowner, that's a tough, that's a tough order for staff to look at it. I think, I don't think we need a workshop on this thing, Mayor. We seem not to be able to get any workshops scheduled. I'd just like to see a position paper from the commission come forward via email. And if it warrants further public discussion, so be it. But at this point, what's actually more important than this is the eastern half of our city in need of galvanized pipe replacement and sewer replacement. And the things that Commissioner Good and I are keenly aware of as far as what our dollars need to go towards. We have, we have a utility department that is continuing, continuing to monitor pipe degradation in our city, citywide. We have issues out in our southwest section of the city that's still on septic. What are we going to do about that? So, if we're going to look at water conservation, we need to have, we need to have an adult discussion about taking care of those capital improvements that are absolutely necessary, that are impacting the quality of life every time the kitchen sink is turned on, not the lawn system. Thanks so much.
All right. All right, let's go, item 19. City Clerk?
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Saifal?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Mayor and Commissioner, the second reading will occur also on March the 17th here in these chambers.
Okay, item 20, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Commission number 20 is the motion to adopt proposed Resolution Number 2021-R-03, which is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, approving and authorizing the execution of the Second Amendment and restatement of the Transportation System Surtax Interlocal Agreement with the Broward County Board of County Commissioners, providing for conflicts, separability, and finally, providing for an effective date. Resolution 2021-R-03 on the floor. Thank you, Mayor.
Castillo moves the item.
Motion by Commissioner Castillo. Is there a second?
No.
Second by Commissioner Good, and this is kind of what I was talking about earlier with Mr. Dodge. A good motion. Discussion on a motion.
Yes, Castillo.
Commissioner Castillo.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm putting on the record that the response to the question I got was no, and the question was, does this have anything to do with the two bridge programs that are proposed for Pines Boulevard? And I was told no, and that's good news. So, I'm voting yes for this one. Thank you.
Okay, City Clerk, color roll, please.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Saifal?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. City Attorney, item 21.
Current number is 3731 for the record, Mayor and Commissioner. Number 21 is a resolution, also, but it's Resolution Number 2021-R04, is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, reaffirming its ongoing commitment to cultivate an inclusive, safe, and just society and culture, denouncing all hateful speech and bias-motivated violent actions, denouncing extremist conspiracy theories, misinformation, and disinformation that increase the likelihood of violence, denouncing attempts to exploit government procedure and basic government functions for personal political gain, committing to fostering an inclusive environment, committing to engagement with community leaders, transparency and public information sharing to fight extremism, urging residents to join in denouncing hate and extremism, providing for conflicts, separability, and finally, providing for an effective date. This is item number 2021-R04 on the floor. Thank you, Mayor.
Castillo moves the item.
Second.
Commissioner Castillo? Second by Vice Mayor Schwartz. Discussion.
Yes, Mayor, Castillo.
Commissioner Castillo.
Yes, the Anti-Defamation League put this on the agenda through me, and I appreciate my colleagues agreeing to put this resolution before us for vote. We have indeed voiced these sentiments before. The Anti-Defamation League is one of the leading groups in terms of fighting for social justice for everyone in the United States, really. And they don't feel that it is a redundant statement. In fact, they feel that it is an important thing to underscore, particularly right now. I'm proud to have sponsored it, and I'm thankful for all of you, and I look forward to a unanimous vote. Thank you so very much, and thank the ADL for all they do for our community.
All right. Any further discussion?
Yes, Mayor. Question for the City Attorney. Thank you. City Attorney, thank you for putting the item that we had voted on last summer.
Yes, sir.
Is there much difference in the language? Were you able to parse the city and find out if there's any additions?
We, of course, at the request of the commission through your direction also, Mr. Vice Mayor, we provided to you a copy of the previously adopted document. There are similarities, and there certainly are differences. And there is also tastefulness in both that may differ between each. It is something which we, we did not parse the words out word for word. We simply did a comparison of both by giving both on the record. My legal view, if asked the question, would be that either could stand independently of each other. They are similar. They are not dissimilar. They are policy-driven, and they're personal in many, many ways. Each covers different aspects of our environment, our community, and our public life. That is my best answer. I know that there are similar terms and phrases. They are not exactly the same.
Thank you, City Attorney. I don't know if it would be appropriate if we could just merge the two documents together and vote on unanimous content to have them merged together, because if the City Attorney is saying that there's some additions and subtractions, I clearly don't want to support something that there's less in, but more in. I think it would be best if we just merged the two documents together. I'll leave that up to the City Commission. I'll leave that up to the City Commission.
City Attorney?
Mayor and Commission, that would be the direction of the commission if it were to, to direct us. At the moment, the item before the commission is legally and properly before the commission. It's a document which has been promulgated by the Anti-Defamation League and supported by Commissioner Castillo for consumption by the commission. It's before you in a legal fashion to be considered this evening. If the commission were to take further action to do something else, we certainly would yield to your direction.
The Mayor, I would, I would move for a substitute motion to merge the two documents together.
Okay, is there a second to the substitute motion? Is there a second to the substitute motion? Okay, hearing none, the substitute motion failed. Round item 21, call a roll, please, City Clerk.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Mayor.
I didn't hear the vote.
Could you repeat your vote, Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Seifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Mayor Ordis?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Our regular agenda, City Clerk.
Thirty-seven, thirty-two is the final number for the public records of the city. Thank you, Mayor.
City Attorney, our regular agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Number 22 is the regular agenda, and the item reads as follows, "It's discussion and possible action on guidelines for the installation of speed humps on public roads." And attached to the item, both in the digital version and the hard version, are various documents and backup information for your review and consideration this evening for discussion and possible action under item number 22 on the floor. Thank you.
All right, item 22. What is your discussion? If not, we'll have a motion.
Uh, Mayor, this is Seifel.
Commissioner Seifel.
Thank you, Mayor. I have one question for, for the city manager. Our, from our discussion before about this item, what we, these guidelines that we're looking on voting, it was, the only thing that we're looking to change was there was a recommendation about the percentage of, of residents that were, that needed, that were required to approve an application. Is that correct?
City Attorney.
That is correct, Mayor. Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. What, further discussion? Yeah, I don't understand what this.
Well, we used to have 85%. We went to 51%. I believe that's what Commissioner Seifel is talking about.
Yeah, and still 51%. He voted that out.
Right.
So, so what we have before us today is, is a recommendation by the, by, what, the police and the fire particularly, saying, "Don't change anything more." And I'm, I don't agree to that at all. And I don't, I, I honestly think that we should, you know, consider loosening up a little bit on the speed hump because of the hazard that is currently existing, at least within the streets that have open networks, meaning they're not closed, they're not gated, they're very long stretches of road in these residential communities that are tied directly to these major arterial roads, and everybody's using them for cut-throughs. And we're having, at least I'm certainly receiving a large number of complaints from my constituents that are saying, "We need safety in these neighborhoods." So I look at this and I say, "Oh, great." Look, easy thing to say is, "Don't change anything." But there is no effort to address the real issue, and that is the speed within these communities. What other solution then if you're not going to use these traffic calming devices? What else are you going to do then?
You can use roundabouts.
You can't use roundabouts in every place.
You can use them in some cases.
Not in, not, not in many cases.
We have one right here at City Center.
You can't use them in many cases. You have to have a very large right of way, and you're going to take property, and people don't want that either. So the point is, though, is that these traffic calming devices do provide a, a great, they do what they do. They're supposed to be traffic calming. And then the way that, that, that we do these assessments, sometimes I'm, I'm a little concerned about too, because we rely on Broward County to come out and do a, a traffic study or a, a traffic count, and it's only one day, maybe if it's a day. And, you know, the reality is Broward County has nothing to do with speed humps. They've got nothing to do with the speed humps. They, they say, "Hey, hey, you all want them, you do it, you deal with it." So why are we even using Broward County? And then the question is, is why don't we do real studies? I mean, we have folks that are qualified, competent, capable, and it doesn't cost much to drive, to purchase one of these traffic counts, to really put it in there and leave it in there for a seven day period, and really take a look at what's happening within that area that's requesting. Listen, if it doesn't warrant, it doesn't warrant, I got it. But a lot of these places do warrant, and I'm telling you, I've stood with my constituents at their home while cars, I'm, I'm telling you, driving down a road, you go down some of these residential, when I'm in my communities, they'll pass me, and I'm doing 25, maybe 30 miles, and they're still passing me, which is ridiculous. So I experienced it firsthand as well, too. And I don't agree that we shouldn't consider making an, you know, creating an, a, a traffic calming ordinance or a resolution as this is, you know, that would better serve our communities and make them safer, and address the real issue, which is speeding within the neighborhoods.
Fire Department years ago were reluctant to have speed humps, then it was speed bumps, but now they're illegal, so speed humps. And they were reluctant because I was one of the first ones to institute that, and they said when you had emergency with an ambulance, speed hump, if you're injecting somebody, would create a problem. So I know they had a problem with a lot of speed humps in our city. I don't disagree with you that we should study it, but I think, at least I recollect, that the county doesn't do this one day with the traffic.
No, they do.
Well, okay, I could be wrong. I've seen them up there, I've seen them up there for a week or so.
No, specifically.
And they're putting on these electronics. They don't, I don't disagree with you, Commissioner, but the City Attorney, what do we do on this item?
Mayor, I'd like to weigh in before.
I have, I have a comment as well.
All right, Vice Mayor first.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess it's deja vu all over again. It, you know, I had inquired about with the administration, like, why is this here? Because the backup wasn't written really that well, to be quite honest with you. Commissioner Good had asked for some information and, and back as a discussion item. So, that's in front of us. The, the issue that I believe Commissioner Good raised still has not been answered, because we have communities that have a speeding issue. Now, I thought, when I brought forward the item a few months back, allowing the police department, five elected officials, to determine whether or not speeding is occurring and humps should be installed, that was the intent of the ordinance. But you have COVID outbreak, and now all of a sudden, we've had, I think, no less than three humps installed without any, just a wave, what the police department's supposed to do. The opposite of what this report is saying. I think, I think that the, the department and our fire department, specifically our chiefs and our city engineer, are relying on the information that is included in our backup, the ITE national study. This isn't a Pembroke Pine Police Department decision to leave everything like it is. The way that the backup, and I, I did have a conversation with Mr. Gonzalez about this a few days ago, the backup is written wrong. It's, it's basically saying that our police chief and our fire chief and our engineer agree with the ITE study that's in the backup. And because of that, leave well enough alone. Commissioner Good, to his credit, has restated a need to slow people down in this city. Roundabouts cannot be installed on 15th Court. There's not enough room. We have a street scape, phase two, if I'm not mistaken, prior to you, Commissioner Good, was approved for roundabouts. Where are they? So we can, you know, we can continue to frustrate our residents. That's happened, Commissioner Good, June of 2016, where I was outvoted three to two that night. Here we are almost five years later with the same conversation. The same one. Now, we had bumps and now we have humps. But guess what happened, Commissioner Good? Between the time that the bumps and the humps came, we had a total of 19 humps in the entire city. Do you know how many we've had since COVID? Three. So explain to me, how in the world can we go from 19 over a period of almost a decade having three inside of a year without a police study? This item makes no sense to me. We, we, I asked for temporary, temporary humps that could be moved around in order to address some small issues, but then we'll hear, "Oh, it's just the neighborhood kid who's speeding." This is not an issue, as Commissioner Good has said, in the closed road networks. Now, granted, HOAs like Walnut Creek came to me, and I was able to get them their traffic mitigation, and now have actual traffic enforcement happening in that community where tickets are actually issued. Then we've had, I hate to say this again, Mayor, we asked for a workshop to ask the county back to the table so we can, so we could address the, the traffic agreement, so we can actually install, I don't know, things like stop signs out, out in Chapel Trail. I think it was like Johnson and 200 and something. We were told no. This has been going on, I've been here nine years, and it seems like every year this thing comes up, and there's no resolution, Commissioner Good. So I was happy this, I was happy to see this item because I'm tired of talking about it. I want action. You know, it's, it's amazing, more people don't get killed in our city because of speeders, Mayor. So I know that there is a personal view on whether or not you want to support the concept and how many we should have. That's why, when I brought the item forward, I want to take it out of our hands altogether and put it squarely on our police chief and his, and, and, and his officers to determine if there's a problem. And we shouldn't have a waiver. If the police department says no, then it's no. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right, but right now, remember, if you want to install speed humps, the neighborhood has to vote on it. Used to be 85%, but now it's 51%.
Correct, Mayor, but it also has to have a police.
I'm talking, Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor, please don't interrupt. So, in my old neighborhood, John Jacobs had the neighborhood, and they're installing speed humps in that neighborhood. So there's actually being done. Speeding is another issue, and we should, I mean, I see speeding every day in our city. And it's ridiculous with the loud motors, and we've got to stop that. I understand that. I want to do whatever good to make our city safe. Commissioner Castillo, is that one second?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Nothing about this conversation surprises me. The, the last time this came up, I predicted very quietly that it would happen. We had a process in place that worked. What didn't work was that the process wasn't being followed. And I hate, and I hate being this blunt, but the, but the reason it wasn't being followed is because we have not attributed the degree of seriousness to the issue that it deserves, that I've, I've always felt it deserved. Very often, speeding is associated with a handful of individuals living on that block. Not all the time, but very often. And there is simply a reluctance on the part of officials to knock on that door and say, "Hey, I'm not here to make any accusations. There happens to be a make and model of a car very similar to the one in your driveway that has been consistently seen as speeding, and I just want you to know that it's causing a problem in the community. And we don't know whether it's you or not, but we know what we're going to be doing about it. We're going to be enforcing the law, and these tickets are very offensive, expensive." And by not doing that kind of community contact, we allow this thing to continue to go and to continue to move on. Some of us remember different days growing up where the dads would do this stuff. Now, we have a different sort of a society. Okay, so now police is being asked to do this. And I hear, I hear responses like, "Oh, we don't have probable cause." You, you do have probable cause. Knock on the door in a non-confrontational way and do it. Some say, "Well, police don't have time to do it. If police don't have time to do it, then we need to hire cops to do it." Again, it's about ascribing seriousness to the problem. What's before us now was totally predictable. They are afraid, the people who are writing to us are afraid, and we should listen to them, that there's going to be a risk, if not an actual proliferation of speed bumps throughout the city, slowing down emergency response, which will cause deaths, because there will be people they can't get to because we can't fix this smaller problem. Not so long ago, I was in the eastern part of the city with the city manager. He already knows the story I'm about to tell. We were visiting a woman who was, was, was exasperated with the amount of speeding at her home. Mr. Dodge was kind enough to give me a lift to that constituent's house. As Mr. Dodge was getting out of his car, a speeder nearly ripped his door off. This is the city manager's own car. He, he was, he was lucky, he was lucky to escape with his life. Now, that kid lived on that block, and it was John Baker. What a hero he was, they gave him the ticket. He was there, too. He met us at that, at that lady's house that day on his motorcycle so that, so that we could, we could begin doing business and figuring this thing out. To this day, she writes me saying, "I am embarrassed to live in Pembroke Pines because I had this problem. I had all these people at my house and the speed, nothing. It's, it's as if you guys weren't here at all." So the problem, the problem isn't changing the rules, my friends. The problem is attributing a seriousness to the rules that we had. We are now, we've now, we've now short circuited the issue. We've now legislated the problem. And in legislating the problem, now staff is saying, "You've created a greater problem than the one you think you've solved." And we'd be smart to listen, but they need to do their job. In the last resolution, it says, "There will be a traffic enforcement committee, and it would be consisting of police and fire and the city engineer and the city manager." And they were supposed to come up with a solution to this well before any petition for speed humps would even be entertained. In other words, the assumption in the resolution, if you all read it, and, and perhaps it will be distributed again, was that when we got a serious complaint about speeding, this standing committee of, of professional staff was to meet, figure out the problem, and solve it. And in the event- And in the event, in the event that they couldn't solve it, then a petition requiring eighty-five percent approval of homeowners would be entertained. The other thing had to happen before the petition came. But somehow what happened was, no, we got too busy and not, and this committee never met and they never came up with answers. And everyone had a, an excuse. And then you had this thousand-foot rule which came out of left field and all this other stuff. So, what I'm going to say to staff who've presented us with a, with a beautiful report is this. Not for nothing, I would cut an arm off to defend you. But you're writing us to say that what the city commission did concerns you. Guess what? You're no bargain either when it comes to this issue. We, I have been asking for this for years, well over ten. And we still don't have the answers. So, that's, that's what I have to say about it. Commissioner Good brought an item because he got sick and tired of speeding on his area and nobody would do anything about it. I don't blame him for it. I don't blame him for it. But the minute I saw that come forward, I knew it was destined to fail.
All right, thank you. Let me just say that years ago, many years ago, I got involved with the speed hump, then it was speed bumps, with Chief Urundino from the Fire Department, the police, our city engineer. And that's how we formed that committee to see if speed humps, bumps at the time were necessary for an area. And we did Fourth Avenue down, out west, where people, because of the development, were cutting through Fourth Avenue instead of going out to Pines Boulevard. So we got that, all those humps put in there and it solved the problem. So Mr. Dodge, I mean, we could talk about this all night. What's our answer here? We're all concerned about speeding. We're all concerned about homeowners. What do you say?
Well, Mr. Mayor, we certainly will revisit it listening to all of your comments this evening. And we'll provide a report back to you.
All right, everybody okay with that? All right. Twenty-three, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. Number twenty-three for the record is references twenty-one zero one zero two. It is a discussion of possible action to negotiate in agreement with Florida Atlantic University, that's FAU, for the purposes of conducting a redistricting study to establish the city's four election districts under the city charter. On the record is twenty-one dash zero one dash zero two. Thank you, Mayor and Commission, number twenty-three.
Castillo moves the item for approval.
Okay, Commissioner Castillo, is there a second?
Cycle.
Commissioner Cycle seconds the motion. Discussion. Bearing none, call a roll, please. Who was that? If you don't tell me your name, I'm sorry, I don't know who it is.
No, no, not me.
Okay, go ahead, City Clerk.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Cycle?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordis?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. On reports of the league representatives, we've had some very good meetings. In fact, the Broward League had a meeting with Jake, Jake, Mr. Moskowitz, who was in charge of the state's, you know.
F, F. F.
The emergency. I'm sorry?
FDM, F D E M.
Florida Department of Mercy, man.
Who's talking?
City Attorney, that's the F D E M.
Jared Moskowitz, we all know him and his father. He was appointed by Governor DeSantis to be in charge of FEMA for the state of Florida. So we had a very good discussion with him at the Broward League. And then we had another discussion with him at the Florida League. And we also had another discussion with him at the coffee with the president of the Broward League as well. And now you've all heard that Mr. Moskowitz is in April going to be giving it up and coming home. So he's done a great, great job. And I certainly appreciate all of his efforts. Commissioner Cycle, anything else?
No, Mayor, you, you, you hit on the three items that I was going to talk about, which was our meetings, our many meetings with Director Moskowitz. Thank you.
All right. Manager.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have just one item. Once again, I'm having difficulty trying to finalize a few workshops and three topics that we've discussed to arrange for dates. It's very difficult to do this via email or, or anything else. The last meeting, we did establish at the meeting some dates. Three topics that we currently have pending that we need to address is an item that was on a commission agenda prior to this regarding facial recognition. And there's a request for a workshop. The other item that goes back a year is the debris removal and monitoring for hurricane issues. And the third one is the discussion on the Veterans Foundation on what we're going to do with that. That third item is a, a pretty easy item. It probably shouldn't take much more than twenty or thirty minutes. My suggestion would be to put it on as a discussion item at a regular agenda. However, the other two, I think, would demand a little bit more time. I'm sure we could give a couple hours to it and maybe combine the two and do it one evening. But I would need a date that everyone here this evening could agree to as to when you would like to do it, the date and the time.
Mayor Castillo, if I could?
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes, thanks. I want to thank the city manager. He, he has been emailing us, asking us for dates. And I know that everyone is busy. But the business of the city can't, it just, it just, it just can't wait anymore. And I don't, and I don't understand, we used to be better about being able to schedule. Maybe, maybe there are certain schedules that aren't as accommodating as, as they used to be. And that's understandable. People have other things to do. But we're, this is work. This isn't, you know, you know. So, we have work to do. And these, and these workshops are significantly backed up. So, I would say, Mr. Dodge, ask people what their availability is and then call the meeting. And if, if, if certain folks can't make themselves available, then they can't make themselves available. It's just a workshop. It doesn't keep them from being able to vote on an item. The, the workshops are, are videoed. They can share information later on. We should make every effort we can to get there. But we are seriously behind in business. And it, you know, it's, we got to move on. So, call the, call the meetings.
Mr. Mayor, if it's okay and it's consensus of the commission, if I work with the mayor to select a date, we will notify everybody. And if we have a consensus, then move forward. That I'm understanding.
Be right, be, be.
Mayor, I have a question for Mr. Dodge and Schwartz.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Dodge, is there any way that we can put the storm debris on Monday's workshop?
No. The Monday's workshop is designated for the RFP. Number one, I don't think we can do this to both.
That's fine, because the, the storm debris, we're under contract for like another year, aren't we?
We are, but we extended it. But we were told almost six months ago that you wanted to have this workshop to discuss how we're going to do it moving forward.
No, I, I, I understand, I understand that, sir, that, that we have, you know, like today would have been a great time to have. I, I, I don't know what's happening with everyone's calendars. However, I do have a question, Mr. Dodge. I don't know if our police chief is still on the line or not. But this facial recognition software that was on consent was pulled and discussed because of concerns about misuse. I don't know if the, if this same technology was used to arrest those involved in the Capitol riot or not. And I really like to know if the police chief, if he is on the line tonight, if he could let us know if that's similar technology that we will be discussing at a workshop.
Chief Shimpino, are you on the line?
Mr. Mayor?
The chief, the chief is on the line. If he would open up.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
Hold on, Commissioner Castillo. Chief, are you on the line?
Kip Shimpino, Police Chief, yes, I am on.
Good evening, Chief.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
Point of order, Commissioner Castillo.
The subject is the scheduling of workshops, not to get into workshops.
I'm not getting into workshops, Mayor.
Let's finish the discussion on the scheduling of the workshops. And then if there's a question on old business or whatever, let's finish the question so that we can get somewhere.
Okay, Chief Shimpino, go ahead.
Mayor, if I could just ask a quick question. Chief, when you testified regarding this, this software.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
Your point is not taken well, Commissioner. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
There are, there are members of the black community with whom I've been in contact. We want to be heard on this.
Commissioner Castillo.
I am asking, I am asking this commission.
Vice Mayor speaking. Commissioner Castillo, can you hear me? Vice Mayor speaking. Please be.
I have a point of order. The point is we called for a workshop.
Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Chief, I'm looking forward to having a workshop. But between now and, I don't know when one's going to be scheduled. I've been available for, for, for days at this point. But Chief, the technology that Pembroke Pines Police Department was going to, was considering using along with other agencies, was this same or similar software that what was used with the FBI for the Capitol riot in identifying those who desecrated the Capitol?
Chief?
Yes, sir, that is my understanding.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Good, did you have something?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I, I'd just like to say there's a difference between getting scheduled, you know, from us and, and trying to fit some in. And then there's, you know, maybe not getting any information from us in terms of what a schedule is. Now, I've been very diligent whenever I've been asked to provide, you know, my, my calendar pretty detailed. I'd like to still be able to do that. I, I, because again, it's a difference of picking a meeting date, knowing that I can't be there versus picking a meeting date, you know, just because I didn't respond.
Right.
So, I, I prefer to at least have on record, at least that I provided my availability. And I like to still do that. Without, so.
All right.
I mean, and I understand, you know, give it a timeframe, maybe, you know, within this week or within this two-week window, what's your availability? Allow me at least the opportunity to do that.
Okay. All right, City Manager.
Yes, Mayor.
Are you finished?
Yes, Mayor, I am.
Okay, City Attorney?
Just one item, Mayor and Commission. We just sent to you within the past couple of days our first report regarding pending legislation. There's a bill that was filed yesterday, which I think is worth noting to you for a reason. As you know, our special counsel, Scott Weiselberg, from the law firm that he represents, recently in an allied litigation on opioid matters. As you know, we're currently in litigation in the middle district of Ohio as a lead plaintiff in that litigation. Mayor, Mayor and Commission have been very supportive of that. And the adjunct to that was the filing about a week and a half ago of the McKinsey lawsuit. McKinsey was the promoter of the opioids. They were, they were the main promoter consultant, et cetera. They helped to market the opioids nationally. A bill was filed just yesterday, which was brought to my attention by the, by the Broward League of Cities, House Bill one zero five three, interestingly, which would define matters of great governmental concern to mean any fact, circumstance, or conduct that has caused substantial economic loss or other harm of a similar nature to governmental entities in five or more counties in this state. And would exceptionally preempt to the Attorney General of Florida the authority to file cases like the opioid litigation and the gun management litigation, in which the city is a party as well. Just want to let you know that bill just got filed. I don't know that it has a Senate bill companion. At the end of the day, consistent with what you have done as a city commission for and on behalf of the benefit of our citizens and residents, if this bill or one like it were to be adopted, you would not have been able to file the opioid litigation nor the gun management litigation that you were involved in, which is currently pending, by the way, in the first district. Yet to be decided by the court. So I will update you more, but that just came across my desk this evening. Worth noting for the record. And McKinsey, McKinsey case was filed last Friday. Thank you.
City Attorney, I don't know all of us, I hope all of us are getting the notices from the Florida League of Cities. We've got to respond. I've been, I've been sending out letters for pro and con on a vote. The legislature's not going to be in person. It's going to be virtual. So you won't have a lot of time to speak in a, a environment where everybody can hear you. However, you can still write them and put, and make your notices and make your opinions noted. We need that because this seems like it's already on its way, vacation rentals, no matter what the bills are. Please, let's lobby as hard as we can.
Mr. Mayor, what's, Mayor, if I may, just really quickly, the, the issue is that access to the courts of Florida is, is a right provided for in the Constitution. The, the access issue would be denied local government such as this city and, and given solely to the authority of, of the Attorney General with regard to certain matters which, which again, are matters of great governmental concern, which this city commission in recent years have highlighted, have determined and measured certain matters that were in fact of great governmental concern. And you involved yourself, yourselves in the litigation. This bill would disallow that.
Yeah. Okay, Mr. Brother?
Mayor, it's a cycle.
Commissioner Cycle, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And to just sort of piggyback a little bit on what you were saying about, you know, outreach to our legislative folks. Both the Florida League and the Broward League have said that some of the legislators have said, I'm not going to pay attention to emails. What I want is phone calls and I want letters. They want letters in their hand to, to do. So, all the folks that I've been talking to and I've been reaching out to, especially on like vacation rentals to some of the HOAs in my area to see if their board would consider, you know, as a board writing, you know, as a, as a community to write a letter in, in, you know, in opposition of the whole vacation rental and this preemption and all that that they're, that they're doing. So, I guess I would have a question for the City Attorney. On, you mentioned not only the vacation rentals, but opioid and the, and the gun control issue. Is there, going along the thought telling us on how they would like for us to reach out to them? Is there, do you see benefit in having three separate letters? Do you have as opposed to combining the issues together? And if so, would there be any suggested language perhaps that you would think of that would be appropriate for these letters?
There is, I know that the Broward League is helping cities to do that, by the way, in the context of advising their, their delegation members and members of the legislature, what, what, what is a concern to them? And would be happy to work with administration and the mayor and the commission, obviously, to help craft those letters as, as the session evolves. Apparently emails don't cut it anymore.
Yeah, that's the story that they were telling us is that the legislators are saying, we, we don't want emails. We don't want to, don't flood our email box because we're not going to look at them. We want, we want a letter in hand or we want a phone call or, or your face in, in, in our office, which that's not happening so much of now. But more specifically, and, and maybe I'll check with, with both leagues to see if, in fact, like what I've been promoting is individual communities, HOA boards, what have you, representing their communities to write some of these.
That's a great, that's a great idea, Commissioner Cycle, we should do that.
Well, I'm just asking if we could have some help with, with some of the language. It would be appropriate, maybe, you know, for these different groups. And should it be three separate letters as opposed to all rolled into one?
Good idea.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else?
Yes, Castillo.
Commissioner Castillo.
Yeah, two points. So I had a chat with Mayor Ryan and also with Heiko. So I had a chat with Mayor Ryan and also with Heiko DeBrauca, the, from the tourist council. These, and I mentioned this also to the City Attorney, these vacation homes do not pay bed tax. And, and yet they are part of the vacation.
Definition.
Right. And they should pay bed tax. And if they pay bed tax, then they, they, they have to be licensed under, under some sort of a state rubric. Then the question is how they would be inspected, whether centrally or locally. So there, there, there's, there's, there's a lot of work to be done there. I very much like Commissioner Cyple's recommendation that we get third parties in the city, including homeowner associations and others, though this affects homeowner associations to a lesser degree, to write letters. And that, and that causes me to ask Mr. Dodge the next question. In the last newspaper, city newspaper, I did see an article and I thank you for it, reminding people that it's the law, if you're a homeowner association or condo association, have to, you have to come forward and, 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 and give us the emergency contact information, which we would need in order to sort of mobilize an effort of this kind citywide. What other steps are you, are you planning to come back to us and tell us what additional steps we're going to do to enforce this ordinance?
Dodge? Mr. Dodge?
Mr. Mayor, I'm trying to get on.
Go ahead, you're on.
Okay. I'm, I'm sorry, I missed that. I lost reception and I had to reboot it, so I didn't hear Commissioner Castillo's question. So I apologize.
Where, where are we? What, what are your plans to enforce the HOA emergency reporting ordinance? Are you ready, are you ready to talk about that yet? Are you still meeting with code enforcement and legal to figure it out?
Well, what we're trying to do is determine how many we have left. And I think the approach would be is to make personal contract, contacts with those HOAs first to see if we can voluntarily get compliance with it. Then if we cannot, then we'd have to advise you as to what HOAs are refusing to give us the information and why.
Well, without, without volunteering anyone, I know that knowing, knowing the importance of this ordinance, each of us in our elected capacity would be more than happy to help. I certainly would. So if, if it involves an HOA in my area, please let me know. I also have a pretty good list of HOAs in other areas, but you know, you've got district commissioners who can help you with that. Contacting them in person is in fact what I have been suggesting. So I'm, I'm looking very forward to seeing how this can be done because Commissioner Cyple just made a perfect example of how we can mobilize this resource to, to the city's advantage. But we can't mobilize them if we can't contact.
Correct.
Mr. Dodge, we just had three homeowner associations completely turn over, so we have to go after, go after, we have to go after them and make sure we get their information.
Yes, Mayor.
Airing now, nothing else? Have a great night. Thank you all.
Mayor and Commission, nice evening. Thank you.